On my computer.
On the nose.
Alright, let's go ahead and get started. Before we go into our agenda, which we do have agendas back there by the podium, by the back door, if you want to follow along. First, we wanted to say something about the events that happened this weekend. So I have a short speech for all of us. On behalf of the entire Lawrence City Commission, I offer our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and loved ones of Leah Elizabeth Brown, Colwyn Lynn Henderson, and Tramell Dupree Dean. We send our heartfelt sympathies to those affected by the tragic violence that occurred early Sunday morning here in Lawrence. In times like these, words ring hollow and lack the depth of the loss felt by this senseless incident brought to the heart of our city. If we might take just a moment for quiet reflection for this tragic incident and for the horrific mass murder that happened in Las Vegas the very next day, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Please know that our police department is working very hard to bring those people to justice. We'll be working with our new police chief to discuss the public safety of downtown and what we may do further to both prevent these types of crimes and to better identify those that are guilty. Our legal department is also working on creating guidelines to handle our city's response to nuisance bars that repeatedly have criminal activity occurring on their premises. And in the near future, we will have Robert Benecki here from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to update city commissioners on new criminal justice initiatives in place, both at the city and county levels. I have faith that this is a commission that values action, and I know that we will do our best to seek out thoughtful solutions. I'd like to share a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. "True peace is not merely the absence of tension, it is the presence of justice." Thank you all for the moment of silence. Will you pass this down to your chef, please? I'm gonna put this back up there, because I didn't want that displayed while we were discussing that. Alright, so first up, we're gonna have a recognition of the student delegation from Oyteen, Germany. Who's here to speak on that?
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. My name is Bob Schum, I'm the Chair of the Lawrence Sister City Advisory Board. I am pleased to have this opportunity tonight to demonstrate to you our board's work product. Once again, our board has facilitated this student exchange between Lawrence and Oyteen, Germany. Professor Bill Keel from the German Department of KU will perform the honors of introducing the Oyteen students to each of you. Thank you for your cooperation and support of our organization in providing you with the cultural exchange that we have seen exist and continue to perform. Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Bob. Frau Burgermeisterin, die Ratsherrn oder die Ratzfrau. It's my pleasure to once again introduce the student delegation coming from our sister city in Oyteen, Germany. Before I do that, though, I think we should mention that today is the German National Holiday, the Day of German Unity. And exactly 28 years ago, the delegation from Oyteen was in our city, stood here before the city commission, and signed the document authorizing the establishment of sister cities. And less than two weeks later, a momentous event occurred in the city of Berlin. The Berlin Wall opened. And one year later, on October 3rd, at midnight, the two Germanies united. So our sister-city relationship is deeply involved in that German unity. And I like what you said, Mayor, at the opening. We are a family, we are sisters. The Germans and the Americans who've participated in these exchanges for the last 28 years are family. And I like seeing a couple members of the family at the city commission table. Mike Amix, Herr Commissioner, back in 1987, you sent that first proclamation to Oyteen, inviting them to come to our city and form ties that bind us to this day. And one of the charter members of the Friends of Oyteen was Stuart Bowles, back in 1988. So you guys have shown your commitment over the years, and we greatly appreciate that. And we appreciate the support of the entire city, of course. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce Katharina Bilka from the Foss Gymnasium, one of the two high schools in Oyteen, who's here for her second time. Is that correct? Bitteschule.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Soden, for welcoming us here today. After months of planning, my students and I are very excited and happy to finally be here in Lawrence. I would like to thank Mr. Schultz for organizing such a diverse and extensive schedule full of wonderful activities, a trip to the Flint Hills, Kansas City, or a Chiefs football game, just to mention a few. I would also like to extend my gratitude to all the outstanding and caring host families. Thank you for welcoming us and making this such a unique experience. More so, I would also like to thank the Sister City Advisory Board and the Friends of Oyteen for their direct financial support as well as their behind-the-scenes events, such as the welcome party, which is to follow right after this event. Without you, all of this would not be possible. It's wonderful to see the program thrive and the bonds of Oyteen and Lawrence remaining strong. Thank you so much. And now I would like my students to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Helen Aguiarriadas. I'm 16 years old, and right now I'm attending Free State High School. I'm very thankful for being part of the exchange here in Lawrence.
Hello, my name is Sarah Millik. I'm 16 years old, attending Lawrence High School. And I'm really thankful for the opportunity to visit our sister city Lawrence and for such great people surrounding us and making it a great learning experience. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Schimmacher. I'm 16 years old. I am attending the Free State. And I'm very thankful for having the opportunity to experience the American way of life.
Hello, my name is Tyra Obenhaus. I'm 16 years old, and I go to the Lawrence High School. And I'm very thankful to be a part of the exchange here.
Hello, my name is Sarah Westphal. I'm 17 years old. I'm at Lawrence High School, and I'm so glad to be here and stay with such a nice host family.
Hello, I'm Laura Graha, and right now I'm at Free State. And I'm so glad for this opportunity to be here in Lawrence and make all this experience possible.
Hello, I'm Hannes Geiser. I'm 16 years old, and I'm glad to be here and stay in such a nice host family.
Hello, my name is Wajib Peeling. I'm 16 years old, and at the moment I'm visiting the Free State High School. And I'm thankful for having you here.
Hello, my name is Elisee Blom. I'm 16 years old. I'm going to the Free State High School, and I'm glad to be here.
Hello, I'm Emily Zalbert. I go to Free State High School. I'm really glad to stay here, and so far I'm pretty impressed, and I'll have to come back.
Hello, I'm Berla Peterson. I'm 16 years old, and I'm attending Lawrence High School at the moment. And I'm really thankful for the great possibility to spend some weeks in this beautiful city and this beautiful country itself.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. I'm finishing Peeling, and I'm at Lawrence High School. It is very impressive here. I love Lawrence. You have great burgers. Better than in Germany. And I'd like to thank Family De Wit for hosting me and for showing me around the city. It is awesome. And I would like to say that, especially in this day and age, those culture exchanges make people come together, and I'm regretful for that.
Mayor, city commissioners, thank you very much for receiving the delegation. I think it's very understandable how much this means for these students to be here and share Lawrence and their culture and their culture with us. So we appreciate everything you do to help us, and we're gonna keep right on working and do the things we do to provide this opportunity for both our students in Germany, Greece, and Japan, as well as those students to come here and see us. So thank you for your help. And they're all going to adjourn now to go to the depot. I'm gonna have a pizza party, and I would say you're all welcome to attend, but I need some of you to stay put for just a little while for the meeting. So thanks again.
Thank you. Does someone want to hold this in front?
Glad I wore my new coat. Just tell him that, I'm glad I wore my new coat.
Thank you all. Thank you. I was almost gonna do a proclamation. I'm doing domestic violence. Wrong one. Not the same. Bob, will you close those doors, please? Excellent. Alright, so now we're gonna go on to number two, which is to proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do we have someone here to speak about that? Come on up to the podium. Megan? Are you speaking on behalf?
Willis.
Alright, Will. Bring it up here, Will.
Thank you, Commission, for this proclamation. On behalf of the Willow, I would just like to say that, in light of the most recent events, it's more important ever that we now stand together, united against violence. Domestic violence affects one out of three women and one out of seven men, and over the course of a year will affect 10 million Americans. It happens everywhere. It happens to people of all places, social standings. It's universal, and it's something that we at the Willow strive to help shelter, support, and bring hope to survivors of domestic violence. So this month is about awareness of that, and we thank you for joining us in standing in awareness of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'll read the proclamation. Whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner, and one in three women and one in seven women will be affected by domestic violence in their lifetime; and whereas the city of Lawrence, Kansas, places the utmost value upon the health and welfare of all of its citizens and striven to provide a safer and healthier community; and whereas domestic violence includes verbal, emotional, economic, sexual, and physical abuse, then all forms of abuse carry long-term physical and mental health implications; and whereas the effects of domestic violence reach far beyond its impacts on survivors and their abusers, causing disruption in community schools, places of work, and worship, and neighborhoods; and whereas during October, the Willow Domestic Violence Center, working in partnership with local agencies, businesses, organizations, and groups, sponsor and promote Domestic Violence Awareness Month to community-wide attention on survivors and their children, and to promote support of shelters and community programs. Now therefore I, Leslie Soden, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you. You can come up here.
Alright, excellent.
You guys shake my hand first.
Okay.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. Do you guys want a picture too? Alright. We're gonna have to hide it once for violence reasons. Porter, will you do one more for me?
I can send you these too.
Just you?
Wait, wait. I just wanna get that right. Oh, I think I got it.
Thank you, Porter.
Would you like ribbons for domestic violence?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Find that picture with Willie.
Thank you.
Put it on right now.
Will, we still need that drawing.
That's right, Will.
We're gonna eminent domain that thing if you don't hand it over.
It was a promise.
No. We could try.
Thank you very much.
I did that final thing, because I know both of them for a while now. So I always gotta tease them a little bit when I can. Alright. So now we're on to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. So is there an item that a member of the commission wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Is there an item that a member of the public wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. And Sherry, should I point out that one of them was removed beforehand? Does that matter? Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of claims for 381 vendors in the amount of $6,893,983.23. Motion made by Commissioner Amix, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, so now we're on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss, debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments, questions to the commission. So this is for items that are not already on the agenda.
Good evening, commissioners. It's been a long time, but happy to be back here. This time getting to speak to you guys. And I just wanted to invite you all to an important event that we have coming up in two weeks. It is October 14th. It's the Breast Cancer Awareness 5K and 10K. You have the option to come run or walk it. And the reason why I'm inviting all of you guys today is because 100% of the proceeds go to the Catch a Break Foundation, which is a local foundation partnered with LMH Endowment. And the foundation goes to local survivors of all types of cancers in helping them afterwards with their struggles, whether it's medication, food, or bills. So I just wanted to give you a quick flyer, and I'll be on my way.
Sure, just make sure you say before you leave the microphone your name and...
Oh, Karen Potasio, eat 39 mass. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Alright, are there any other items for public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement. There's two things I'd like to talk about. One is, you know, I said what a good job, everything's been going on in North Lawrence. We do have one priority, and that is the 400 and 500 block of Perry Street. That's a major concern of stormwater flooding. It's only a block and a half away from the pump. And I've been talking to Matt Bond, Chuck, about that project, which needs the storm drainage pipes buried underground. And when they did that, they found a 100-year-old cast-iron water line that needs to be replaced. Now, I keep hearing that there's not enough money to start on it this year. The residents and I would like to make it known that this 4th and Perry, 5th and Perry, should be number one priority of getting this done. These people are still, their yard's flooding, basement's flooding, in those two blocks. And we're a block and a half from a $7 million pump. So we need to start on that ditch reconfiguration. And, you know, when we started this project, it said the city would take care of that in-house. The second thing is, April 15th, we talked about a stormwater policy code on lots RS3, RS5, protected by levy. That's been going on since April 15th. And all the publication I see is low priority, blah, 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 blah. Well, when's that gonna get on the agenda and get it done? I keep hearing the excuse that we're one planner short. One planner short, and it's going on three years since we started this project. And nothing's been done. And so we'd like, North Lawrence residents and NLI, we'd like to see this policy move forward on this development of these smaller lots. So we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a timeline for that, Scott? Is that going through your office?
Mayor, yeah, we report on that in our monthly newsletter. Every month, we try to be transparent and honest about the workload and the changing priorities of our department versus the resources. And Ted and I talked here a week, two ago, and it's something I think we can move up the ladder. We are in the works of hiring a planner in the department, and so that we were short on. So, yeah, I do think that's something that we can have a positive report on here shortly.
Cool, thank you, Scott. Any other public comment items?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Shannon Hodges, and this is my colleague, Koila Lockhart. And we just wanted to introduce our organization and tell you a little bit about us. In 2017, just about first of the year, we organized a group, which we are calling the Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery. We were founded with a goal of helping the city to address the deterioration of the monuments and the grounds at Oak Hill Cemetery. We aim to provide advocacy, education, and practical support to the city in caring for Oak Hill. Our goal is to restore Oak Hill as a place where those who have gone before us are remembered and honored with community care and pride. Oak Hill was established as Lawrence's city-owned cemetery in 1865, and since that time has become the resting place for approximately 60,000 members of the Lawrence community. Nearly every person in Lawrence has a connection to Oak Hill. It is the resting place for the largest number of victims of Quantrell's raid, as well as numerous historically significant cancers. Additionally, Oak Hill is on both the state, local, and local register, and was added to the National Historic Register on July 19th of 2017 through the work of many dedicated individuals. Our group recognizes Oak Hill as a key component to the overall appeal of Lawrence as a historic destination. The historical significance of Oak Hill cannot be separated from the story of bleeding Kansas, the Underground Railroad, and the birthplace of the Civil War. Additionally, the historical foundations of the University of Kansas are intertwined with that of Oak Hill. Currently, we are working with city leaders to establish and prioritize goals. We currently have a meeting scheduled on October 17th. Um, we currently have a meeting scheduled on October 10th with Derek Rogers and members of Parks and Rec Department to discuss some of our concerns and possible solutions. Um, in the long term, we envision ongoing fundraising efforts and events, and would like to develop a community volunteer program to assist the city staff in caring for the cemetery. Um, we wanted to invite the public to an informational meeting about our organization, um, our goals, and invite, uh, interested individuals to work together with us. And that meeting will be held on October 26th at 7:30 PM at the Lawrence Public Library in Meeting Room C. Thank you.
Thank you for your volunteer work.
Uh, Dan, Danenburg 2702, University Drive. Uh, about a month or so ago, I, um, went downtown Lawrence, uh, around midnight and, uh, after to, uh, have a little entertainment, frankly, just to walk the sidewalks and see what was going on. And in view of last, uh, weekend's events, I won't be doing that anymore. Uh, because it's clear that the situation on Massachusetts Street at those times is out of control. And one of the sources is, of course, alcohol. And we are a city that is drunk, because our 15% of the revenues, I think, that the city gets come from alcohol sales tax. So we can't do anything about that. But we need to do something about, one, how it's policed. I'm not an expert in policing, I'm not an expert in anything. But what I observed in my, uh, perambulations around Massachusetts Street in those late night, early morning hours was that, uh, uh, there's not enough, uh, police presence. And, uh, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But I do know that there are one or two, shall we call them venues, that seem to attract, uh, a good many patrons, most of whom, uh, are there to consume alcohol. And most of them that I saw were stumbling around and being loud and whatnot. And, uh, so that's, that's what, that's the way it goes. Uh, last Friday night, I happened to be in a place for my usual fix of jazz, and I noticed, uh, later in the evening, two men, two about middle-aged men, I hadn't seen them before, came in. And they ordered, uh, drinks. And then they came in later, and one of them was clearly intoxicated. He couldn't walk a straight line. And the other, uh, I guess, I don't know, he seemed to be intoxicated too, because he was having trouble speaking to the bartender. The point being, why did these two men get more alcohol? The bartender should've said, "Sorry, guys, no more." But we had a situation where nobody's gonna say anything, because basically, nobody's in charge. And it's just going to get to, uh, be a, uh, a real problem. One final comment, it already is a problem. And one final comment, this morning I was downtown, and...
Dan, you're at three minutes, so wrap it up, please.
Okay, I'll make this close. I was downtown, and I saw three people, a couple and a single individual, who I hadn't seen before. But it was pretty clear that they came to Lawrence to make their place or whatever, because they were looking around and not knowing where they were. So we've got to get Lawrence off the map as a destination for transients and homeless. I, I could go on, but I'll end with that.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, City Commission. Uh, Derek Rogers, Lawrence Parks and Rec. I just wanted to say, uh, we wholly, um, welcome the opportunity to work with the Friends of the Oak Hill Cemetery Group. And we think they're a great cause and look forward to hearing what they have to say. And in a lot of cities, they do a lot of good, uh, helpful good to help us, uh, keep our cemeteries in, in shape and looking well. So I look forward to working with Shannon, Koila, and the rest of the organization. That's all I have.
Thank you, Derek. Any other public comment?
Tim Murphy, 1980, Pecan Valley Court. And, uh, I would just like the, uh, city to, uh, entertain the idea of closing Castles at K-10. I realized that when they originally were gonna open it up, they were gonna close it. And then somehow, a petition got put out there to leave it open for convenience. I don't think it's very convenient with all the accidents that's been happening out there. And I think that, uh, I myself have seen three times when a car has pulled over and then cut across in front of another vehicle in order to get to the other side. We're talking about, like, one time was in front of a dump truck. Wheels are squealing, somebody could've been killed just because we wanna get to the other side. And so I don't know who's responsible for that petition. I think it was a business in Lawrence and maybe part of the council, I don't know. But I think that whoever changed that to where it was left open instead of closed, somebody gets hurt or, or killed, they're directly responsible for it, because they changed it to be that way. So if there is any way to get you guys to open it back up and look at it, what you got going there isn't working. Just a couple of little, they just keep on going around it further. I know they extended it so they had to go further.
Correct.
They still did. So you gotta close Castles, and that's your jurisdiction. Close Castles so they can't go through. Uh, I called KDOT, and they said, "Yeah, we wanted it closed." So it's not on them. And they said, "Well, it's going to be closed anyway whenever they change it into a four lane." In 2030. That's a little bit down the road. So I don't know how this, uh, comes about, but how do you get something started where you get a conversation of, "Let's close Castles South"? That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Chuck, is that the right timeline is 2030 when the four, four lane K-10 is supposed to be done?
We don't have an exact schedule. Um, it's not in this year's plan or program. Um, it's not in any foreseeable future. And they are working on the EIS, which is the environmental impact study. But that's three to five years, and then there's still no funding for it. So at this point, that's, it's, it's not known. It's just not known.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Any other public comment? Okay, so let's close it. Writing some stuff down here, a second. Okay, so now we're on to the regular agenda. So addressing the commission, the public is allowed to speak to any regular agenda item or give public comment. After first being recognized by the mayor, each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments, questions to the commission. So number one, we have received recommendations from the Public Incentives Review Committee and continue the public hearing from September 19th, 2017, regarding a neighborhood revitalization area at 800 to 815 Vermont Street for the Vermont Place Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, Britt Crompano, City Economic Development Coordinator. You have before you a reconsideration of a request that was presented originally towards the end of last year. So for the most part, the details of this project are known, and I'm gonna keep it fairly brief. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, introduce, uh, kind of a recap on what we've done so far, what the current request is, and what has changed. We'll go into the, um, analytics after that. And then, uh, the applicant is here to talk a little bit about the project. Uh, Tom Jackson from National Development Council is also here. He will talk about the gap analysis specifics. And then I'll wrap it up with considerations and recommendations and the next steps. So, um, just to recap our history, again, this, uh, was a request that was considered towards the end of last year. Uh, it went to, uh, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, as well as PERC. Uh, they both recommended the project. Uh, it then went on to the City Commission on the December 6th, 2016 agenda. At that point, there was not consensus as to the level of NRA rebate. I believe the commission asked the applicant to go back and consider and think about additional possibilities to make this project go forward. Uh, the original quest, request was for a 10-year, 75% NRA or neighborhood revitalization area, and also an IRB or industrial revenue bonds in order to give sales tax exemption on project construction materials. The new request is actually exactly the same. The project parameters have not changed, including the affordable housing. Uh, the applicant is still going to provide one affordable housing unit that will be for sale and held in perpetu, in perpetuity for affordable housing needs. Uh, again, they, um, ha, asked for an NRA and an IRB, and, uh, basically, staff still feels that they, this project doesn't meet eligibility for both. What has changed is analytical assumptions have been updated, especially the financial parameters. And Tom Jackson will go into that in much more detail, including, uh, any changes in expense, revenues, loan assumptions, and property valuations. Also, since the last time we've had a legislative change where the, uh, uh, school district capital outlay mill levy now has to be excluded, so the analysis excluded that mill levy as well. Uh, the main change, uh, is that the applicant is now suggesting that the, any, uh, unit that would be used for personal residence would be, for his personal residence, would be, uh, ineligible to receive an NRA rebate. So that's the biggest, I believe, change. Uh, just a quick overview, NRA is a rebate program. It is, uh, based on the incremental increase in property value due to property improvements. The base property tax, or what the property is currently, uh, generating in terms of sales tax, or in terms of property tax revenues, is shielded from the rebate, and that continues to be paid by the property owner. IRB for a sales tax exemption on construction materials. This is a conduit financing mechanism in which there's no liability or, uh, need to repay back the bonds on part of the city. It is a state-administered program. Uh, the analysis, basically, we did a cost benefit or benefit cost analysis. And we also did, uh, the gap analysis, which kind of covers the pro forma and the financial, uh, but for question. Assumptions, again, for the most part, we just upped the numbers. Uh, this was, these numbers were provided to me by Tom Jackson of NDC based on current market conditions and, uh, reevaluations of, of revenues and expenses. There are no full-time jobs that will be created. Uh, this has not changed. Total estimated sales tax exemption, um, savings for the city, county, and state is about $284,000. And the total estimated NRA, uh, rebate is worth about one, a little over $1 million. Uh, here's a breakout of the estimated sales tax exemption savings. Uh, there is a little difference between the number I use in the, uh, benefit cost analysis and what Tom uses in the gap analysis. I don't take into consideration the other county municipalities, so my numbers are a little bit slightly, uh, less than Tom's. Uh, current property values, this is unapproved. Both of these lots are vacant. Um, and they are pulling about $7,200 a year in, uh, property tax revenues. Uh, here's a breakout of the, um, cost benefit results. Uh, the, the city and the county both have exceeded our preferable 1.25 cost benefit ratio. The city is at 1.82, the county's at 2.74. And because there's no new jobs or households created, then there's no, um, cost, additional cost attributed to the state or the, the, uh, school district. IRB sales tax, again, that's about $284,000. The NRA is, again, a little over $1 million, so the total package is about $1.3 million. We did look at projected property taxes, both over the 10-year NRA rebate program, as well as going five years beyond that, to see what the returns would be. The first line shows the base taxes, again, these are shielded from the rebate. The incremental tax, the second line basically shows the additional revenues that the taxing jurisdictions would receive, uh, with this project developed. And then the taxes rebated would be at the 75% level. And so, uh, the bottom line is the total new taxes that would be generated. Um, just in looking at those comparisons, over a 10-year period, base tax is about $7,200. Uh, if you go 15 years out, it's about $108,000. Um, the incremental tax, again, this would be what the taxing jurisdictions would receive, $609,000, $610,000 over the 10-year incentive period, and about $1.48 million of, after the 15-year period. So basically, the difference, uh, over the incentive period is the taxing jurisdictions would receive an additional $538,000 in tax revenues. And if you go 15 years out, it equates even more, because at that point, the, uh, rebate is no longer being applied. So it equates to about $1.48 million in terms of the difference. Again, this is only looking at five years beyond the incentive period. Most real estate does have a significantly longer lifespan. So that's kind of the beauty of the NRA is the payoff is really after. The, uh, the rebate expires, and, uh, then the taxing jurisdictions receive a much higher return on their tax revenues. Here's just a visual of that same data. The blue is the base taxes, what it would currently continue to generate if we left it undeveloped. The red would be the additional, uh, revenues that the taxing jurisdictions would receive. Again, uh, through the 10-year incentive period, the green portion would be the rebated amount back to the property owner. And so at this point, I'm gonna let the, the applicant, uh, talk about the project, and then we're gonna have Tom Jackson come up after him and talk about the gap analysis, and I'll just wrap it up with some additional considerations.
Staff yet? Okay. All right, let's have the applicant.
Once again, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Bob Shum, together with my wife Sandra. Uh, we are the, uh, proponents, uh, we are the developers of record for this project, 815 Vermont. Um, I do appreciate the opportunity to once again stand before you and ask for your positive consideration. I know it's been a while, and, uh, your time is valuable, but I really do appreciate this opportunity in light of the fact that the two, uh, changes that, uh, Britt mentioned, that I've withdrawn any consideration for any personal residency that I might occupy from the NRA, as well as, uh, at the first time in the presentation, which was voted down on a two, three vote, you really had solidified and worked through your, uh, economic development policy. Since that time, you have, and you've come to some very good conclusions about what is acceptable policy for the city through which you can operate and fall back on those policies. So just a quick recap, because we've, we've been through this before. Uh, in addition, my wife, here tonight, I have Chris Pollen with RCB Bank. And I've got Stan Hernley, who's a project architect. So if you have any questions for any of those people, they'll stand to answer those questions. Uh, once again, the, the fire in 1990 caused the vacancy of this property. So that's 27 years it's been vacant. The, uh, the, the project hasn't changed, the footprint's the same. All the dimensions and all the number of units and square footage of commercial space and office space are the same. First floor is going to be commercial, second floor is office, and the third, fourth, and fifth floor are residential units. One of the things I'd like to remind you of, there's always been this discussion of, does it present sufficient public good in order to merit a tax rebate or tax refund? And some of the things that this project does support is, one, affordable housing. Two is sustainability. We've offered to build it to a LEED certification. It is infill development in the downtown. It is the revitalization of underutilized property. It's the promotion of downtown density, which is good for downtown. It'll grow your tax base. It'll provide onsite parking. And two other things that I find my page, it'll, it will be designed to the Universal Design Guides Guidelines, which means it's completely accessible throughout the entire building. It's a project which will attract retirees, which is one of the policies and goals of our city. And also, it should provide and offer above-average wages, should support above-average wages because of the high-tech office incubator environment that we're going to install on the second floor. That, that would be probably enough space there between 30 and 36 offices. Right now, I have a like system in place. It doesn't quite have the higher-tech features that I want to incorporate this, but I have 31 offices above the three floors, three stores that, on Massachusetts Street that I own. So, one of the things I wanted to point out too, in the past year or so, Commissioner Bowley came to me and asked me what I would build, what I would probably build if I didn't receive the tax rebate, which would support the project as presented on the board tonight. And I said, "Well, probably it'd be two floors of commercial, first floor office, second floor, and then a residence that I would occupy on the third floor." And so, he wanted to know the numbers on that, and Tom Jackson ran those numbers using all the material at hand. And the question is, what, how much taxes would each pay over 50 years? And a 10-year, 75% NRA would, would support a $13,200,000 tax for 50 years. And if it was just a two-story commercial and one, one living unit without any NRA, it would generate $6,200,000. So, with the rebate, over 50 years, and that's a long time, but that's how long real estate lasts, in this example that was worked out by Tom Jackson, you'll double your tax income from 6 million, 6.2 million to 13.2 million. I think that's significant to understand the benefit you get into when you get a project like this that'll work. I hope that you'll receive this information and regard it as a positive step forward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or any of the people with me here tonight. One, one final comment that I know you're, you've been concerned about is, I can stand here before you tonight and tell you that all taxes that I owe, have owed, I don't owe any, federal, state, county, city are all fully paid. I'm fully paid in every, every jurisdiction of tax that I am liable for. So, just wanted to make that point since that was brought up once before. Any questions?
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Bob, the upper floors and the facade, what is, what is that outside finish? Is that concrete or stucco or what?
I'm going to let Stan talk to you about that. It's a mixture of materials.
Stan Hernley, Hernley Associates. The upper, the elevation that you're looking at is the east facade facing Vermont Street. The floors, as they progress up, are also stepping back. On the upper portion of the third, and then the fourth story, and then the top story, are a fiber cement panel that would be painted. So, it's similar to the products that are being used on the upper stories on New Hampshire Street.
The, the red-colored facade on the two sections, is that, is that brick?
That's brick, yeah. So, the bottom two stories, so there's the lighter color material on the bottom two stories, and that's stone.
Okay.
And then the three-story portions that are red are brick.
What's the possibility of taking that finish all the way up?
So, the issue is that as we step back, then we start to need to carry whatever that wall finish is with beams and framing instead of being stacked up vertically where it's carrying itself. I mean, technically, it's feasible, but it, it gets to be structurally difficult to do that as we step back away from the street. We, we, we've been through the Historic Resources Commission, and I wasn't able to be involved in those discussions because I'm on that commission, but I know that there were a lot of discussions about the materials and the similarity between these materials and the New Hampshire Street projects, I think, were acceptable from that standpoint.
And also, I'd like to point out, with regards to the HRC, we spent three months down there, three different meetings. One of the goals on this was to not encroach on the Lucy Hobbs Taylor House. And by stepping back, we, we reduce that front facade presence, encroaching, encroachment on that facility, as well as by reducing the materials to a more neutral, not as, what would I say, not as dominant. It reduces the impact visually on that house. And there you can see, from a side view, looking to the southwest, what, what happens there.
I'm not seeing in the staff memo where it went to HRC.
Sorry, what was that? Not seeing the...
I'm not seeing where this went to the Historic Resources Commission in the staff memo. I'm looking for that.
That would have been a year ago, in July.
Okay. But it's not on the staff memo, right? But it went to, what, what was the final vote out of, just a second, guys. What was the vote that came out of that? I assume it was approved?
I believe it was 4-0.
For the economic analysis, it won't be in that report. I think Scott can maybe address that with the outcome list.
Well, I think they're reporting accurately. It's been through the HRC process for architectural design review.
So it's already received final approval from HRC?
It's, it's approved project.
We should have that in the staff memos from now on. I'm not seeing that in here at all.
I believe it was a 4-0 vote that approved it. Maybe Scott can check that out and make sure I'm not saying...
Let's make sure we add that in the future.
Is that right? Oh, okay. Yeah, I've got a letter in my file here that says it's been approved, but I don't know if it has the vote con.
Got it real quick. Does the building line up with the Lucy Hobbs Taylor in the front, or is it...
No.
Again, that was an issue that was discussed at HRC. There were preliminary designs that actually did push the building back to be in line with the Lucy Hobbs Taylor House, but the Downtown Design Guidelines actually call for buildings in the downtown area to come out to the front property line. So through that review process, we were requested to bring the building out to the front property line. Yes. I know, sometimes I get a quizzical look on my face when I look at the design guidelines.
We started out with that being back about two to three feet from where it is now, and they absolutely rejected it, said, "No, we want that right up on the sidewalk where all the rest of the buildings are, and that all buildings to be built would be the same, the same man." We thought we were doing a, a nice, careful job, but they said, "No, that's not the way you do it," so.
Is that Scott's?
No, that was, that was the Commissioners that, that said that.
Talking about the design more tonight, I could have had, I could have had Lynn here to speak to it.
Stan did sit out, not even in the room, when these were being presented. His partner, Mike Myers, was my representative at that time, so that, because his firm did the, I need some representation to weigh through the design kind of questions and debates.
I had a question about the parking. Is there going to be any, any of the off-street parking right in front of the building? Are we going to lose that?
We showed, why don't you show the crosswalk design? Oh, you did? You know, I might have it in here. Okay, Commissioner, I don't think we...
I have it. I can put it up there.
We did show a site plan with a crosswalk there because our feeling is with the parking lot across the street, with the increase in activity, both Vermont Street Station and the, my facility, it's going to lead to a lot of crossings at mid-block in the street, and it's going to be a safety issue. So, we took the liberty of showing where this could take place, and Stan has this blueprint right now that I can show you. And then I'm at a loss to tell you what the net effect on parking places is.
You were asking about the back or the front?
The front, on the street. Are we going to lose on-street parking? Lose any spots?
Technological literature. So, somewhere in there, if this facility gets built, I think it'd be prudent for the city to have a crosswalk there for safety, safety sake. That parking lot's only going to get bigger, not smaller, over the years. That probably would be a very prime lot to have decked in the future just because the activity up and down Massachusetts, Massachusetts Street, now the activity on Vermont Street. It looks like you'd lose maybe three parking spaces. Is that good calculation? Probably 65 feet or 70 feet?
On each side of the street?
If, if it was done on both sides, yes.
Do we typically put crosswalks in the middle of the block? Chuck, somebody? Do we typically put crosswalks in the middle of the block, not necessarily in front of somebody's front door?
Yeah, tell me, do you have any block crosswalk?
I guess the question though is, Commissioner Larson's asking, this is not right in the middle of the block. I don't believe it's probably a few feet to the north. And is it custom to put it exactly in the middle of the block? Is that kind of what you're...
Yeah, I just was curious. I just thought we'd do it in the middle. But we're losing six parking places on the street with that proposal. Is that correct?
If this was done, this isn't an approved site plan.
Well, and we're not offering to build the crosswalk. We're suggesting what it would look like and how it would function. I wanted to be clear on that. Everybody get that in a minute's face?
Do you put the site plan already approved?
No, there hasn't been a site plan.
Or, or the... Is the architecture examined through HRC? The site plan hasn't been processed.
Okay, so that's not on the agenda.
Okay, so it's not.
Where is the access to the parking garage?
Off the alley. Can you...
Is that that south corner?
That's a car elevator. You drive in and you go down a floor, and then there's 22 parking spaces below. You know, when you talk about car elevator, people kind of get squeamish. They go, "Oh, my God." But you think about, when you get your oil changed, they lift your truck or car up in here, four feet or something like that, 10 feet. And so, it's the same principle. It's a, it's a car elevator that you save the, you save the ramp. It would take a ramp from that park, from that alley, all the way to the front of the building, and then they could turn. You'd lose a lot of space underneath, and then you'd lose a lot of first-floor space because of the tunnel it would have to go down with the descending ramp.
So this is going to have a car elevator?
Yes, it would.
I have to ask, is the company still in business? I'm serious.
Well, Commissioner, when I started a couple of years ago, it was in business.
As it was for the here property.
I would be, I would be, I would check before we have any final drawings, but that is a good point. Thanks.
Our elevators have been existing for decades.
And it never cost us anything.
Although robotic parking must be distinctly...
Now, you have to, you'll have to drive your own car into the elevator and drive it downstairs. No room for us.
If, if, for some reason, the elevator situation, it does not work out, you'll still be able to get 22 parking places?
No.
So then what would you do?
Give up, I guess, on parking. How many, I'll let you ask that question.
So, the, the elevator technology has, has been around a long time. So it's like a passenger elevator, just larger. So it's not, it's not, and there are lots of companies that, that built it. So, we're not tied to a particular manufacturer. So we'll, we'll be able to find someone that can provide that.
Can you show them the parking arrangement on your... Also, the, this, parking elevators have backup batteries in case the power goes out. So you've got a phone and a backup battery, and supposedly, if you're in your car halfway down, you can still go back up or go down.
So if, if you weren't able to get 22 parking spaces in there, would you still want the incentive?
Well, I think the answer to this tonight is you're approving this plan with the incentive. If it doesn't work out, then I, I guess I'd come back and ask for, you know, what we can do. But I'm fairly confident, and I think Stan is, that we can find an elevator that works that will park the 22 cars. And, so I mean, that's, that's a given that we would, at this point, make sure there's 22 spaces for off-street parking onsite.
And the parking's for the residential, right?
Parking is for the residential. Support the residential.
You know, I went to college, and they had elevator burning right across the street from where I went to college in downtown Chicago.
I know that you knew it for a long time.
I went to college a long time.
I thought maybe you've been back recently.
Is the elevator still working, Tom?
I don't think it's been advertised yet.
Excuse me, Bob. I just want to clarify that we have this affordable housing unit. Does it have a parking space as well?
We will, we will dedicate one parking space to that. And probably, I'm most certain that, we've got to work out all this legal stuff next if this gets approved. Once again, I didn't do, spend a lot of money on that because I didn't have a project. But we, the, the LLC will own, most likely own the parking because it just gets easier to do that with regards to ownership. And then we will bring rights to park to people who own property there. The, the problem with dividing up and giving ownership of a parking space to a specific condo unit is you have all these legal descriptions, and you'd have a legal description for each and every parking space to drive, drive the guy down.
I appreciate that. I didn't want to get tied up in the legal technicalities. And I appreciate your sensitivity to it, but I just wanted to make sure that the, the owner of the affordable housing unit had the same standing with parking as the rest of the residents.
They have. Whoever occupies that affordable housing unit has the same privileges and obligations as anyone else who lives in there. They just buy it at a reduced price.
Thank you, Matt.
Real quick, just so we're all playing with the same data and I make sure I got the right numbers. Can you tell me how many total residential units there will be and what that means in terms of rough count on bedrooms total for the project?
Well, there'll be 12 units. And I haven't memorized the square footage per floor. But, you know, I want to sell these units, as they refer to it as white box, a sheet rock shell. You hire your own architect and your own designer and your own builder, and you finish it out. So if you had a, say, a 2,000-square-foot shell, it's up to each owner to do. If they want three bedrooms, they can put three in. If they want four, they can put... If they want four, they can put four. If they want one master, master bedroom and the rest all TV rooms, then that's what's gonna happen. But probably, I think we figured out at about, most logically, probably about twenty-two. And that's where we got the parking is, one parking space per, per bedroom. Now, I've got a person who's been talking to me that wants thirty-five hundred square feet, eighteen hundred down and seventeen hundred, wants to put his own staircase in. I don't know how many bedrooms he's gonna have in there. It's just he and his wife. But it might be just two bedrooms. So, I really, I really don't know until it gets sold. But there's, we think logically, there's, it's going to be around twenty-two bedrooms and there's twenty-two spaces. So, I believe there's a good ratio of parking availability for each bedroom. So, hope that answers your question.
Does. Thank you.
You have a question?
I do. So, and there's probably more for Scott. So, then the items that we have tonight don't really deal with the design of the building. It doesn't deal with the site plan itself. It only deals with the financial requests that we have before us, correct? Okay.
When do we deal with the site plan?
I don't think we do.
Those are, those are follow our, those are follow our normal review processes, which should be an administrative process in this case.
So, the HRC, if, if we have questions or concerns about the outside of the building and, and the way it looks, to be able to change that at this point, it has to go back through the process, correct?
It would, depending on the, you know, how significant of a change it is. But, but that, that has its own process and it's been through that process. And then I think the applicant's going through the incentive process with, with you all. And then it will go back to administrative site plan process. Those are different processes than the code lays out for a project like this.
Okay.
I had a question about the infrastructure. Will we have to, will the city have to pay for any of the upgrades that may or may not be required? Will there be upgrades required in order to hook them up to the existing infrastructure?
Are we widening pipes?
I'm sorry. I don't know if we've identified any, Stan, have you identified any? Typically, no. It's incumbent upon the developer to pay any upgrades. Occasionally, we will piggyback onto a project where we have an identified need of the city in general and we will, you know, get into that alley or whatever it may be to, to do a project. But our policies will put those costs on the development.
Okay, thank you.
And already, we have agreed to replant any of the trees that would be missing, that would be removed in the course of construction. As well as, we have to add street lighting to the theme type of street lighting that's downtown. That's our obligation as well. I think that came through the HRC.
There are certain public improvements that these type of downtown developments have connected to them that the developer pays for.
I wanna go back to your comment about the, I should call it like the white box building. Does that white box approach apply to the affordable unit as well?
No. The, the affordable unit will be fully finished and it'll be turnkey. And actually, we were fooling around with the plans and in the contract or the plan, is that what it's called, plan? In the plan, it calls for a minimum of five hundred and ninety square feet. We were trying to fit it in and it came out five ninety. So, I don't wanna mislead you. It says six hundred somewhere in the presentation, but it may be five ninety. So, you know, you're talking the square footage of a closet, basically. So, and these plans aren't final, but in the contract or the plan, which is a contract, it says minimum of five hundred and ninety square feet. That's the equivalent of a generous one-bedroom living unit. We owned a six hundred square foot condo in St. Joe when my wife was teaching at Missouri Western and it was a very generous setting. Except for St. Joe.
Tom, you know, somebody needs some help here and it has to do with the financial end. I see things like a crosswalk going across and, and Bob, I appreciate that you suggest that we could probably pick that up. If we were to approve, if we were to add a condition to this, an agreement not to protest benefit district. And, 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 you know, during the time that the NRA is in place, would the rebate apply to the taxes paid on that? Second of all, I, I know that this property is in the district for the parking garage, for the library parking garage. Are those taxes being rebated as part of this also?
Well, the first question regarding special assessments, I don't think that would...
They're separate, special.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not part of the...
And that would not redound to the gap or to the increment that would occur in terms of the expense. So, that would be on them if they were in a benefit district.
Same would be true then on the taxes that, that he's already paying based on that lot? That, that's a separate deal?
I'm already paying specials for the new parking garage.
Thank you.
On that property. I think you are too.
Me too.
He just wanted to make sure you were, but it continued.
He says he's paid them.
He just didn't want you out of your part.
Fully paid them.
Are the specials based on square footage of the property? Is that how those work? For that library?
It was, that was...
It was square foot, wasn't it?
That was square footage of the property. Yeah, I believe that's right. Yeah.
There's all sorts of different units you could apply, but that...
Yeah, yeah, there was. Churches are different. There's, it's kinda complicated.
I was just thinking with all this, you know, going up, maybe we could renegotiate that, but, you know.
I don't think so.
Just a thought.
Anything else?
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'll stand for further questions after Tom Jackson says what he wants to say or any of the speakers after the following raise issues that...
Listen to you. I have another question. Yeah, we'll ask her next. We'll do Tom first. Rebecca, you'll, you'll be on deck after Tom.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, come on up and...
Nice to see you all again, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. I know a number of you've seen quite a few of the specifics of my presentation before. Thanks. So, I'm gonna kinda go over some of the slides pretty quickly here and get to the...
Make sure you announce who you are.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Tom Jackson, National Development Council contracted by the city to help evaluate the need for gap financing in projects that are requesting city incentives such as the NRA and IRB.
Thank you, Tom.
You bet. So, again, we're back and Brett already gave some pretty good background on adjustments that were made to past evaluation based on the passage of time and other changes. Bob briefly mentioned that the, several other scenarios were investigated. He mentioned the one that he reported on the fifty-year flow. There were also scenarios that were investigated just removing the underground parking expense and removing the top floor. None of those resulted in a significant or, in most cases, it was a reverse, that they required more subsidy rather than less in looking at those. So, what's back as the developer has stated is the same plan, but with a lot of adjustments based on rents are up, expenses are up, the property tax levy adjusted between the years, construction costs are up, average sales of homes in the county and the city are up. Those are all the good news in terms of what's up. At the same time, the property tax levy itself went down a little bit and then the available NRA rebate was adjusted per this slide based on both the change in state law exempting the school district's capital levy and the elimination of consideration of any increment generated by the top-floor apartment as part of the NRA benefit. So, just very quickly then again, a reminder that from our perspective, the National Development Councils, we define gap as the difference between a project's costs, the bank debt that it's able to attract, the equity that it's able to attract. If we don't have agreement between the sources and the uses, we have a financing gap. And looking at each one of those elements, we have to ask questions and it's a long process of asking those questions. Are the project costs reasonable and adequate? For the bank loan, has it been maximized, given not only the lender that's been chosen by the developer, but the prevailing market conditions in the community? And for the equity contribution offered by the developer, do they get a fair return measured by what other developers are seeing in the community, in the marketplace? But without any city assistance providing undue enrichment to the developer, development? And finally, if we do have a gap, then are there public sources available to help close that gap? In this case, very much as we found with the initial review, the projected debt exceeds the estimated debt capacity given lender underwriting criteria. The projected sales proceeds from the residential condominiums are reasonable, given the offered product and the current market. Developer returns on investor, invested equity rather, are reasonable with approval of the requested NRA and IRB incentives. And here's just a real quick crosswalk comparing before and after down here at the bottom. We have our total project uses up on top. Our total project cost just shy of ten million dollars. The sources that are matching those, at this point, there's no upfront city financing available to help close the gap. So, it's only the potential flow of rebated property tax and avoided sales tax that impacts the benefits to the developer. We have the revised program and assumptions that we're looking at. There are the revised column down below and the prior project that was presented last year. We're seeing projected return on investment of just right around seven point four-three percent with the revised compared to just shy of eight percent with the prior submission. And then just walking down, taking out the NRA but leaving the IRB, taking out the IRB, leaving the NRA and with no incentive, a five point five-eight return at this time compared with a five point seven-eight return last time. And our analysis and conclusion is that the provision of both the ten-year seventy-five percent neighborhood revitalization area rebate as well as the avoided sales tax expense with the IRB incentive provides the developer with a reasonable seven point four-three internal rate of return on the equity needed to close the gap between the anticipated project costs, available debt, and projected condominium sales proceeds. So, that is the conclusion of my presentation. Available for questions?
Any questions for Tom?
Tom, final question again. Go back to the taxes that the properties currently pay in versus the taxes they'll pay at the first year when completely developed.
I've actually got that on spreads, Commissioner. I know that's in Brett's explanation. We both use the same numbers with the difference that when I look at the total taxes, there's a little tiny other city increment in the county tax levy that she takes out. I think that, so, and the developer still has to pay that small increment. Is this the one you were referring to?
Is this the one you were referring to?
Yeah, got it.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay.
Thank you.
Did you have a follow-up question?
No, I didn't know.
Okay.
I just wanted to see that.
Let's have Rebecca come on up about the affordable housing unit. Maybe just a brief description of who you are and what you're doing.
Sure. I'm Rebecca Buford, the Executive Director of Tenants to Homeowners in the Lawrence Community Housing Trust Program. And I believe I was asked to speak to how this unit would be affordable, what, how are we defining affordability and, you know, how, how you can look at this as a public benefit. And so, first, the definition of affordable housing, which the city has released in several different parts, but I'm gonna use the same definition. And specifically for ownership housing, 'cause remember, this unit would be an ownership unit, that we have said, one, that housing should cost no more than thirty percent of monthly gross income, total housing cost. So, you know, we could get a number for anybody, no matter what income you make. Affordable housing is this number for you, that you're not spending more than thirty percent of your income. The second part of that definition speaks to, when we talk about affordable housing, we're really talking about specific population in Lawrence that needs help to pay for housing, that there's a gap between what they can pay for. And so, we're defining those people that we want to help buy housing, that cannot buy housing on the market 'cause those prices are too high for their incomes, are those that are under eighty percent of median family income based on household size. This is released by HUD every year and basically it's the average income in Lawrence and eighty percent of that, based on a household of one is thirty-nine... Or, I'm, excuse me, a household of one is thirty-nine something is eighty percent. And I looked at seventy percent would be thirty-four thousand eight hundred for a household of one. Obviously, if you're a household of four, the average income is a bit higher. So, there's not an easy, it's a big table and I probably should have it for you to look at, but there's just no easy answer on it. It is a, a table definition based on household size, eighty percent of median family income. So, you're under average income. And those are the folks that we really think should be able to buy in Lawrence. And we typically, in the Lawrence Community Housing Trust Program for homeownership, we serve those that are fifty to eighty percent of median income. Those that are much under, you would say there's not a much wiggle room in their budget that we want safe, affordable rental housing for. But you don't want them to have to fix the maintenance that comes up. They're, just at some point, that's too expensive. So, the question is, the deal here is ninety-five thousand dollar condo unit. For some example or some contrast, I looked up ninety-five thousand dollar new condo unit, new unit, condo or townhome in Lawrence, Kansas, listed on the multi-list serve. There is zero. Okay? There's fourteen listings for old townhome and condos, ninety-five thousand dollars and under. Those are all, were built in the fifties and sixties and look at in our big multifamily buildings. So, again, there is nothing like this on the market and it would, in my mind, for new construction, be extremely affordable at ninety-five thousand dollars. If you look at what's available for ninety-five thousand dollars in the Lawrence market, there's barely anything. You know, and again, most of it needs a lot of work. So, let's put this, you know, we gotta look in perspective of, you know, what could you get for ninety-five thousand? Of course, ninety-five thousand is not affordable for everyone. There are people that can afford that, but that's not what we're talking about. Let's talk about under eighty percent median income is ninety-five thousand affordable. And the way we look at that is we say, could they pay thirty percent of their monthly gross income? Would that pay for a payment for a ninety-five thousand dollar condo unit? Well, those of you that, that love to do this math, condo units have HOA fees. We have a lease fee in our program. There's taxes, insurances, and principal and interest payment. And when we figure all that out, someone that makes seventy percent of median family income, so I didn't wanna just give you the maximum. Really, we wanna serve people that are under that, right? So, seventy percent of median income, a household of one, and really, you could have a household of two in this unit, would make thirty-four thousand eight hundred. That means they'd have a monthly gross of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and two dollars. So, thirty percent would be eight hundred seventy dollars. So, if you have expensive hobbies and a lot of debt load, you may not be able to afford that. But eight hundred seventy is thirty percent of their monthly gross and that's what people should have for housing. And those are the ratios that lenders use across the board. So, if we look at, at current interest rates, but I actually pushed it up a little bit 'cause we know this is not gonna happen immediately. At four point one-two-five percent interest rate, ninety-five thousand would be five hundred thirty-eight dollar payment on a thirty-year mortgage. And if we added a hundred fifty dollars of HOA fees, which Bob has agreed, if HOA fees are more than that, 'cause legally we can't adjust down for an affordable unit, the sales price will have to be moved down. So, that with HOA fees, whatever those are, it will be affordable still. So, that's another protection in there. So that's another protection in there. Our lease fee is $25. Homeowner's insurance and taxes, when we use standard calculations, would be condo insurance, so that's cheaper than a home insurance, would be about $855, under the 870, that would be 30 percent of monthly gross income. And this would be a downtown residence with a parking space. So again, not making judgments on the development overall, but that this one unit would absolutely meet our definition of affordable housing. And the other thing I love about it is that this subsidy that's making it $95,000, which is a significant subsidy, will be locked in, so that we will steward it, and the next person who buys it will get, we will recycle that subsidy, and it will be affordable for the next buyer and the next buyer. And that's the beauty of the housing trust. So, to me, it's permanently affordable. It allows people that make $34,800 to buy into a nice downtown unit very affordably and earn wealth, right? The nice thing about ownership is we allow people with lower incomes to build equity and possibly move out to a bigger unit if their family size increases. The other nice thing I love about this concept is mixed-income housing, right? We keep talking about, we don't want to build 30 units, or 14 units, or 10 units altogether of lower-income housing. We like, we want things to be mixed, because every study shows that's the most healthy type of neighborhood and healthy type of housing. So again, we're not saying that each of these units, there's some high-end units here, but the beauty is that mixture, and the education that will happen if someone with a very high income learns about the realities of a single parent with a little bit more of a workforce housing income. That could be a good thing for our community. And that's the way I look at it. This would absolutely be affordable. And it's not the silver bullet for our affordable housing problem, we're going to need a lot more, but if developers in each development could put in a few affordable units, that's one excellent way, one of the tools we can use to attack this problem.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions?
I got one question, Rebecca. On the neighborhood plan, the revitalization plan, there's on page six, under the affordable housing requirements, there's a statement here that there's going to be a second mortgage on the unit. It says, "LCHT shall hold a second mortgage on the unit in an amount equal to the difference between the market value of the unit and the actual sale price." Could you explain that to me?
Sure. Because it's a condo unit, the housing trust usually owns the land underneath a house and sells the property to the owner and keeps that as a legal mechanism to control the resale price, because we don't want them to be able to take our subsidy with them when they sell it. So that's usually our legal mechanism. In a condo, there is no land ownership, right? It's just you own four walls. So, to provide the same legal mechanism to restrict the resale price from never, they never can sell it for full market value and take our community subsidy out, we hold a second mortgage, that if someone in the program tried to sell it on the market, I would say, uh-uh, this is community subsidy that goes to affordable housing, you'll need to pay me this back. So it's just another legal protection that's confusing, but it works the same as a ground lease.
Okay. So that's held within the, with the tenants to homeowners?
The Lawrence Community Housing Trust would have that mortgage with the owner
Right.
that bought it, to say that you can't take the community subsidy out.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So someone can't flip it?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Rebecca? Okay.
Yeah, hold on. You said that you thought this property would be ideal for a single parent? And where would the child sleep?
I'm sorry, I should, I misspoke, a single individual.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking singles, and what, I'm glad you brought that up, I did misspeak. The single individuals, you know, seven of the last nine of my land trust homes were bought by singles. That is a huge need in this community, a lot of people in this range, professionals that are single and need affordable housing, because they only have one income coming in.
Any other questions for Rebecca? Britt, were you, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to wrap up and basically go over some of the considerations as well as recommendations. The considerations really have not changed from the last time. This is an opportunity to bring two unproductive lots into productive activity, to promote density and vibrancy within the downtown area, to support infill development, the office, the entrepreneurial offices, they potentially can lead to additional economic development benefits, spinoffs, and of course, the affordable housing unit that's going to be held in perpetuity to the community. So Steph, because of these reasons, we are generally favorable. We feel this project meets a lot of our community goals, and so our stand is that we're favorable towards it. Perk received this on the 14th of this month, and they voted seven to one to recommend approving assistance at the requested level, which is the IRB sales tax exemption for construction materials, and the 10-year 75 percent NRA rebate. Next steps, of course, tonight, you guys will consider the first round of the NRA as well as the IRB. It will later on go on to the school board as well as the county later on this month, and then it'll come back, the NRA will come back for second reading around the 1st of November. So that's basically, that's basically the wrap-up. I think at this point, we can open it up for additional questions, if you have them, or...
Okay. Any final questions for staff, and we'll go to the public hearing?
I have a something for Bob, a couple more for Bob. Is that okay?
Sure.
Yes, Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, the taxes on the personal residence, as I read through this, it seems as though you, the wording is such that you might, may or may not live there. Is that my understanding?
Well, you know, I would say that's an accurate statement, I may or may not live there. I'm planning to live there.
Okay.
If for one reason or another, I can't live there, I won't be living there.
I guess I would just like to see it more clear-cut, that that top floor is out of the tax incentive part of it.
Well, what if I never lived there?
I'm just saying that I would much rather see it just totally out of the package.
Well, I thought the, I thought the consideration on the commission was that if I lived there, I shouldn't get a rebate on my personal taxes. It seems to me like if I never lived there, then that kind of takes that off the table.
But it's going, it's going to be difficult, I think, and I don't think we should have to try to track that, to see who's living there, who owns it, is it wrapped up in some other ownership, that you're still living there? I would like to see it more clear-cut.
I have to defer to staff on that, I'm not sure how...
Just to take it totally out of the...
Commissioner, what we will be doing as we're working with the county on administering this is tracking the ownership. We'll have to receive documents that are in the application materials that are submitted every year for each of these units, as to the ownership of each condo unit within the building. So we will have a way to track that and work with the county to exclude any unit that Mr. Schum may own.
Okay. I would just like to see that unit totally taken off, so there's no question, because there's all kinds of ways you can wrap that up into different businesses or any other entities that could potentially shield it, or, you know, us having to constantly follow that up, I'd rather it be very clean-cut, neither yes or no, it's in or out, as part of this package.
What if I were to die five years into the project, and it gets sold to another individual?
I would like to see it more clean-cut, I want it in or out.
Any other?
I think Diane is having some consternation with that commentary.
Commissioner, I'm just trying to understand, are you, in the plan, the way that it's written, it would exclude Mr. Schum's personal residence, but are you saying that you would like the top floor excluded?
Well, that's the, that's my understanding, that's the floor he's wanting, is that top floor.
It is right now, but I don't know that I'll be able to, I don't know that that's the way it'll play out. That's why we wrote it, any resident that I might live in, residency I might live in, we'd exclude from taxing, from taxing it.
I would just like to see it clear-cut, that it's either in and out as part of this vote.
Commissioner, so, you want it removed, or you want it...
Removed, yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's not, okay.
So it's not part of it, because again, we're still going to have to track it all for all these years, for the next 10 years, we're going to have to track it as a staff, and we've seen what happens with, you know, potential...
I'd like to maybe, Commissioner Larson, I'd like the staff to inform the commission as to what I have to do to get a tax rebate each and every year, the forms that I have to file, so I don't know who, maybe Diane.
Britt can comment on what we will do initially with these units, and then Diane will.
Yeah, we have met with the county staff to figure out how they were going to appraise and keep track of ownership. So every year, he's going to have to basically fill out a spreadsheet, giving us an exact report of who owns what and what condition it's in, whether it's a white box or whether it's finished. And then in addition to that, he also has to provide a form, every time a unit sells, he will have to provide his ownership information on that as well. The county then will go out and appraise each and every one. Each unit will be, each condo unit will be appraised separately, and the county will calculate the rebate for that particular unit. The city, after the county distributes the rebate money, the city will have to issue a check directly to the property owner. It will not be issued a check to Mr. Schum. It will be up to him to get that money from the property owner.
The premise that we started with here is that Mr. Schum is the developer, should not benefit from the increment stream on his particular unit. And the way we've drafted the language, anything that he would own would be precluded from, included in the financial model for this, for this benefit. So, I think that's protected. The concern I'm having with your comments, Commissioner, are you want to just exclude the top unit as a fix, so that nothing slips through the cracks? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Sure, sure.
And that's not consistent with the initial premise that we didn't want Mr. Schum as the developer-owner to benefit from that increment on that particular unit.
So let me ask this hypothetically, assuming that Mr. Schum does not ever occupy any part of this project, or at least any of the residential part of this project, am I correct in stating that if that should happen, the proposal before us tonight is financially, economically identical to the proposal that was rejected before us previously?
Well, it's not, because he's not an owner. And the premise that you had was...
Well, I understand that, but the numbers that were presented tonight were changed to reflect that...
I think in general, that's probably the case, but I think that there's some nuances that make it slightly different.
Let me off of one other situation that might occur. A top floor is like 2,800 and some feet, as it's configured right now. It is possible that that would be subdivided into two, and I would live in one part, not the other part. So a lot of this is, I don't know at this point, because we haven't gotten into the fine detail of design and cost. And if the cost got to be higher than what we anticipated it would be, that might be an option that I might have to do. If it, they get a lot higher, I may divide it in two and never set foot on the property to live there. I mean, my goal, I'll try to be straightforward with you and honest, is my goal is to live there on the top floor. After that, and that's why it says I may or may not live there, I may not live that one, but I may or may not live there for other reasons, too. So, I mean, that's, I tried to write as clearly as possible. I understand what you're saying, is through trickery or through spoken mirrors, you can sell the property, then actually, then there's somebody else on it, and then you get the rebate, because I don't know that I live there, but I think it says that if I live there, if I dwell there, then I don't get the rebate.
And if that's something you want us to protect, we can deal with that. By declaring that as a tenant or as a specific owner, he would be precluded from doing that, and using that to know...
And I have to sign those forms every year for saying who owns the stuff, so I'm putting myself in a fraudulent situation if I say I don't live there, but I do live there. I mean, I think you're protected, Commissioner, but against the unknown that's out there yet, what, what I may or may not end up doing, I'm not, I would hope to keep the options open, but my word is that if I live there in any one residency, no matter what it is, I hope it's not the affordable housing place.
So you could do that, Tom? Is that what you're trying to do?
I would not.
I think we can draft the agreement to, to address that issue. Pretty confident we can. If you make that a condition of it, that's the condition of the approval.
Britt, did your, I believe it was your math that produced that the total value of the incentive package was, I think it was a million, 19,000 and change, something like that. Was that, was that, or Tom, whoever's math came to that number?
Number.
Was that number built around the assumption that a certain amount of square footage would be exempt from that?
Yes.
And what was that square footage value?
You gotta come to the microphone, sorry.
2,800 square feet, right?
It was the top floor, yeah.
Yeah, it was the top floor, as projected.
So in a hypothetical world where he never dwells there, or lives there, owns that, or any verb that we choose to use for him being in that top floor, what value does the incentive package become at that point?
The avoided incentive that was associated with the top floor over the period of the NRA rebate, the 110,000, $436.
110,000?
110,436.
Okay.
Which is a little higher than what was in the pay for you.
I thought it was 150, it was 150, I thought.
I know, and we talked about it again today, but the minimum we sent to the PRC afterwards, there's the actual total revenues, which are about that. There was the discounted value, which was a lower number, but the actual undiscounted value is 110,436.
Okay, great.
Let me read from the document itself, the financial plan for this. Under rebate amount, the Schums, the developer, and their affiliates, by whatever name or form, shall be ineligible for an NRA tax rebate on any parcel unit within the neighborhood revitalization area used by the Schums as a personal residence, i.e. as a place where the Schums or their guests engage in activities associated with personal residence, daily living, such as cooking, sleeping, bathing, et cetera. Further, Exhibit B is an annual application for tax rebate. This will be signed by Mr. Schum and his spouse. The undersigned owners do here, does hereby, do hereby certify to the City of Lawrence, Kansas, the city, that the following information is true and correct as that made hereof. The owners, in compliance with the terms of Neighborhood Revitalization Act Plan for the Vermont Place NRA, owner is entitled to the rebate of the increment in add-the-law property taxes levied pursuant to the terms of the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for. The undersigned has reviewed the provisions of CAS and understands the penalties thereof. So they're certifying compliance with the previous provision that I noted. Now, we can add the term as owner or tenants in tenancy, that would preclude them from escaping that particular provision, claiming that they're, you know, they're not the owners, they're the renters, but I actually think that language gets close to addressing that anyway. We could add more specificity to it to take care of that.
Yeah, I think it needs to be very specific, if you say it's getting close.
Are you concerned about children, too, perhaps?
No, I'm just, I just want to be clear, we spent the last two years dealing with contracts that were supposedly written to cover everything we needed, and, you know, we've had this issue. So I want it very clear-cut, no ifs, ands, or buts, that if he's in that apartment, if he's living there, no matter what.
I agree.
And that does not preclude occupancy of commercial space, correct?
Yeah, I think this was always addressing the unit that he was living or residing in.
This entire premise...
That's what the intent was.
Of the numbers that we're dealing with tonight is based on the fact that he's not...
He's not there.
He's not, that he's there, no, that's...
No, he's there.
And he is there, and he's not getting the...
So that 110... So that one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars would be an additional perk for him if he doesn't live there, is that my understanding?
Yes, but you've got a bigger, if I tend to live there, and I can't live there, the construction costs have gone a way up to where I can't afford to live there, in other words, they're gonna use that space to produce more revenue, make the equation work, so the project's gonna need that much more money in order to make it solvable.
Sure, I can see how that can.
I mean, that's, that's the only answer, I'm willing to be back on that, is that.
I just want a definitive.
Yeah, I agree, and I thought it was, but anything you want to add to it, it's fine, thank you.
Tony, I don't, Tom, you're comfortable, Tony?
I'm comfortable with it, and I think I'm comfortable with Tony drafting it so that it is that extra level of protection and clarity that you're asking for.
Okay.
I confirmed that one before I said it.
By the way, just, I would never want to be down here in front of you for you feeling like I didn't take your things appropriately, like some of the other developers.
I appreciate that.
I just, I just, I wouldn't want to do that, I wouldn't do it, I mean, I just wouldn't do it. It's not.
You know, we've been sitting up here for a couple of years dealing with that, so.
I agree.
I gotta ask, what's the, what's the fundamental, I mean, obviously, the residential property adds to the property value, as does the commercialized, you know, all of the use, what's the fundamental difference between him residing in the top floor and him residing in a commercial, obviously not living, but having a business within the commercial space? It's my understanding with this contract that, that there is no deduction to his incentive if he should choose to take the commercial space up for Schum Enterprises or whatever.
That's right, there is.
Is there a reason that we have?
Yeah, because the, at least as staff interpreted the intent of the congregation sitting before me, that was dealing with the residents, not the business.
Well, I think the issue was, we were seeking, you know, we had concern about him incentivizing his own residents, but I would think, and I don't want to speak for the group, but I would think that same concern would, would apply as well to an individual occupying a commercial space with no, I mean, I, I don't, I guess I don't see the fundamental difference there.
Can I explain it for just understanding your concern? First of all, I have no intent on opening a business, I just retired officially from the food services, a couple of years ago, I have no desire to re-enter. The only thing that I would probably do is move my office from where I am now to an office unit there, so I can be there to show offices, to rent them, I would hope that I could get them all rented, and I would be out of there, so in addition to that, I think you're, I think you've got some apples and oranges there, residency I can understand, but if I, if I put a business in there, let's say I did put a business, I'm gonna employ people, I'm gonna do the things that you want a business to do.
Right.
It's gonna be an ongoing business, and it wouldn't be the business itself, let's say I opened a corporation or a business, the corporation wouldn't get any benefit out of it, other than because it'd have to pay rent in order to make the equation work that Mr. Jackson's worked hard on, it's the LLC that would get a rebate in total to make this project viable, so it can happen. I know it's kind of a mixed answer, but it's the only way I know how to respond to it, it's, first half, I have no intent to do that.
Yeah.
And that's not saying it couldn't happen, I mean, I'm the one to stand here and say never, ever would happen, but I do plan on having an office there, one of those small offices, so I can use it as a real estate office, basically, to show tenants, or show prospective tenants.
Yeah, I'm not accusing you of looking to start a, an entrepreneurial venture there, I'm just really trying to clarify for myself, if there was a big to-do amongst the commission about you living there in an incentivized project, I'm just trying to understand why there's no to-do about you operating a business out of an incentivized property. So I'm just trying to clarify that from my own understanding.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Bob?
Be available if speakers have questions for me to.
Okay, how many people are planning on speaking in public comment? Okay, let's do a quick five-minute break, so we can do a bathroom break.
That we're continuing, so I'll move to reopen the hearing, I guess is that the proper verb?
Continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Soden moves, Commissioner Herbert seconds, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Alright, so let's do public comment. Come on up and sign in and state your name for the camera, we appreciate that. Come on up, sir.
Where do I sign?
There's a, isn't there a pad up there where the people sign in? I'm sorry, where did it go? I think it's gotten shuffled in someone's paperwork. Rebecca. Rebecca.
My name's Douglas Bradlin and I am a current resident in 719 in Bob's building. I own Standard Grooming Supply and I'm looking to expand my business and I would really like to be in his new building as I would like things neat and polished and new, so I don't have to, I've looked at other places. I don't have to fix anything, so I would really appreciate if you guys would pass this so I could have a nice new shop in his building.
Cool, thank you.
And then I could hire more people. Right now I'm just by myself, I just run my shop by myself, but I would hire six to 12 other people and it would be kind of a big deal.
Thank you Douglas.
I cut hair, but my goal is to have a men's spa, whether it be a cold pool, hot pool, steamer, dry sauna, pedicures, manicures, a big retail station, custom clothing, leather goods.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Alright.
And you guys all have this, I think.
Is it something that you're handing out to us? Do I have one? I went to the bathroom, so maybe I missed it. Thank you, sir.
I gave him these before.
Cool.
I gave him five or six copies.
Okay, excellent.
If you need another one.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna pass it down, I like your logo.
Thank you. Moo, M-O-O.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Alright, next person.
My name is Alice Lieberman, I live on Pill Hill, but I'm an enthusiastic, a long-term resident of Lawrence and an enthusiastic supporter of this project. It is kind of my dream, actually, to be able to live downtown, there's just an incredible shortage, as you know, of housing downtown. My sort of, in my mind, dream is that we live in a place downtown where we can have our grandchildren come and stay with us and go swimming at South Park and so forth, so this would be really perfect for us. I would also add that something really weird happened to me this year, I turned 65. And, where did the time go? And as, as I did, I, I sort of joined a club that you don't usually want to join, but you start talking to people, other people who are in the situation you're in, which is looking to retirement. And there are a lot of people like me out there who would love the opportunity to move downtown, to live in a condo such as the one that Bob has described tonight, and who frankly are little fonts of GDP. You know, we have disposable income and we wanna, we wanna stay here, we wanna live here, we wanna spend our money here, we wanna go to the events that happen at the art center and the movies and the restaurants and the stores. And so, I just think that actually there should be more, not less, of projects such as this and I fully and enthusiastically support it, so thank you very much.
Thank you Alice.
Frank Jensen, once again, 1338 New Hampshire. First I want to say to Mr. Schum, Alheim, long life, live long and prosper. And I am sorry to hear him closing the door on a possible ground floor Buffalo Bob's Smokehouse.
It's closed.
My question is, is easy. On that wall, you've seen the, the building on the south side that has a beautiful huge colorful mural on that wall, I'm just curious to know what's gonna happen to that, how much space there'll be between his building and that wall as we saw what happened with David Lowenstein's mural before, thanks.
Thank you Frank.
Hello Commissioners, Dustin Stumbling Bear, 211 Mount Hope Court. I wanted to thank Commissioner Herbert for asking the question about the finished affordable housing project, so that was one of my main questions. Like to state that having read the materials Thursday, Friday and yesterday and this morning, to make sure I was prepared today, I'd seen the agreement concerning Mr. Schum's unit not being able to fall under the NRA and I felt like it had been working really well, so, but I understand where Commissioner Larson is coming from concerning what's been going on in the city the last few years, but at the same time, I feel like we should be pretty well-prepared coming to these meetings, having read all the documentation and understanding it well. And we have an amazing city staff that I've been able to reach out to in the last few weeks that have answered any and every question to my best understanding. So, I hate to say this, Mr. Schum, I've been knocking doors around the town for several months, you don't have the best reputation here, but the people that do know you say very positive things about you and that's what I have to go off of. And an otherwise man once told me that you look at the project, not at the man. And this particular project has a lot of positives to it that I can agree with, I really love the infill, I love the idea of more apartments, condos downtown, in fact, I asked my wife about moving there, I thought it was a great idea, she quickly said nope, so there was that one out the idea, out the door. But I do like the idea of the incubators, the commercial development incubators, that's a great idea, that's something that's in our strategic plan, or not street plan, but in some of our ideas that we have for the future. And this would be a great place to go for that. Again, I understand the unpopularity of Mr. Schum and other developers in town, but I think we need to overlook that when we consider this particular project and the tax breaks that will come with it. Again, I'm not a fan of them, everyone knows this about me, but there are times where we have to kind of, I'm a proud man, but I'm not a prideful man, and I can admit at times when I have to bow my head and say this is a really good idea and I do believe these items will help our city in the long run, generating tax revenue and also businesses, which as the gentleman who spoke earlier, that will bring more jobs, which we've been talking a lot about during this city election campaign, we want to bring more jobs, and we already have one man saying six to 12 right off the bat. So, I hope you will really consider this project, I understand many of us have hesitation concerning transparency regarding certain people occupying places, and I thank Mr. Schum for being so open, and I forgot your name sister, but I really appreciated you coming up and explaining the affordable housing part for a lot of people who had a misunderstanding. Again, knocking doors, talking to people, they kind of laughed at this one, one-room unit, which 590 square feet, that's, that is really large. So, I hope you consider those projects, I know I, I know I'm saying this and it's gonna probably hurt me, but I do support this project and I hope you guys do as well, thank you.
Thank you Dustin. Any other public comment?
Good evening City Commission, my name's Travis Robinett, I live at 1402 West 22nd Street. I think we should all be clear about what's gonna happen to the area of downtown when this project's built. And it hasn't been mentioned here tonight, and so I'm gonna say it, gentrification. Voting for this project is voting for the gentrification of downtown, for subsidizing the gentrification of downtown, I mean to say, and raising prices all around the area for residents, small businesses and visitors to downtown. And it's not a net gain in affordable housing because the pricing for the lots and the houses around it are just going to get worse. You see it all over the country and every city where these types of developments are built, housing prices skyrocket. I was just looking at a price of a condo on New Hampshire Street, there's one for $650,000 and I saw a one-bedroom selling for $370,000. So, when we're living in a time when half of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck, is that, is it really a public good when the vast majority of residents in Lawrence wouldn't be able even think about buying one of these condos? How are, or how full are the condos on New Hampshire right now? Someone said earlier that there was a lack of downtown housing, yet they had room for hundreds of fraternity members when their house had a pipe burst. So, how much demand is there really in Lawrence for unaffordable luxury condos? I saw for myself how these types of developments pushed people away from downtown in Austin, Texas when I was living there, between 2009 and 2014, and I had to move further and further away from downtown until I was priced out and left. I saw new businesses aimed toward the upper-class chain stores push out local small businesses. I saw a drastic rise in price everywhere, even close to downtown, for parking, for food, for drinks and especially for housing, sometimes even quadrupling housing prices in the area. I saw it price out low-income families and push them further and further east till they weren't even in Austin anymore. And this project is being touted as having an affordable housing component. It's gonna do the opposite for all of the property around it, once again. And a $95,000 condo, while that is cheaper than all the rest of the condos in Lawrence, is still not affordable for the vast majority of people. One unit that would be out of reach for the majority of residents is not a major, an affordable housing benefit. We need more than one unit surrounded by 11 high-priced condos to help people afford to live near downtown, that's not even 10% of the building. And it's really not much of a mixture of income, we talked about mixed-income housing, that's less than 10%, and everybody else is gonna be in the 1%, they're gonna be extremely wealthy living there. Next, does the cost-benefit analysis in regards to the tax base expansion, does it assume that these businesses or residents wouldn't locate elsewhere in town? Does it assume that nothing would be built there at all as compared to what Mr. Schum has said tonight, that without these incentives he would still build, there would still be commercial property there for businesses and jobs, but we don't have to subsidize it?
Travis, you got it wrapped up.
Okay, well, the bottom line for me is what do we want Lawrence to look like in 10 to 20 years? You know, are we gonna keep subsidizing high-cost housing that doesn't really help anybody and just raises the prices of everything in downtown? And the last thing I want to say is that the subsidy creates a 2% difference on return of investment in a nearly $10 million project, so do we really need to help out the developer for them to make a good profit and build this project anyway? I don't think the city should be subsidizing anything here. No offense, I think it's, you know, you guys have worked hard, it's a much better proposal than the last one, I do like that there is some affordable housing. And the last thing I want to say is, I think it's kind of also ridiculous that they get an hour and a half, I have to wait over here and then I only get three minutes to talk. So, we, we have a shot clock, but they get all day. I think that's unfair, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you Travis, I would love to make everyone use shot clock. Any other public comment?
Dan, Danenburg, 2702 University Drive. I guess, questions more than anything. This property has been vacant since 1990? Why? Why, why hasn't there been some effort to sell it or develop it? Because as a vacant property, the city has been foregoing how much money in property taxes? The plan calls for 30 units of office spaces on floor two. Do we have a shortage of office spaces downtown? That's, it's always amazing to me, we never hear real numbers. I would have better luck getting Vladimir Putin's nuclear weapons codes, launch codes, than I would finding out how many office spaces do we have downtown? How many are vacant? What's the future demand? How many condominiums do we have downtown? How many rental properties? What's the occupancy rate of these? They just, I don't know. We first, tonight is the first time I heard of a homeowners' association and I didn't know that was involved before. Maybe I, you know, I'm not the smartest guy on the planet, so. There, there's just a lot of, and this, the, the subterranean parking, I know we're not supposed to talk about it here, but boy, that needs to be given a very close look. If we're going to have an elevator putting cars out into an alley, the city is going to have to spend some money to modify the alley, I'll bet, to make sure that the even ingress and egress to this facility can be, be accomplished. And the city, finally, the city is about to enter the quagmire of short-term rental. Now, the city can't, from my perspective, can't regulate rental properties, residential rental properties in town, so how much of the, that these condominiums or whatnot, or even the affordable housing condominium, are going to be short-term rental? And finally, how are these condominiums going to hold their valid, value when downtown Lawrence is becoming a skid road with a late-night free-fire zone? I wouldn't want to bring my grandkids, if I had grandkids, I wouldn't want to bring them to downtown Lawrence.
Thank you Dan. Any other public comment? Just a second. Okay, shall we close the public hearing then? Okay, so all moved to close the public hearing. Motion made by Mayor Soden, seconded by Commissioner Amick, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. So, the hearing is now officially closed. Bob, you wanted to say something? Three minutes?
Try, you got five people, three minutes each, I'm gonna try and respond to the questions that were raised. First of all, with, with the idea of the gentrification of downtown Lawrence, I want you to know that there are no current living units on Vermont Street, from 6th Street to 12th Street, except for Vermont Towers at the end. I fail to see how this building is gonna gentrify any other living units when there just aren't any, especially on Vermont Street, so I can't buy that argument. Excuse me.
Alright, let's not argue back and forth.
I said on Vermont Street where I am proposing this project. Secondly, if I create more commercial space, that doesn't mean I'm gonna run off people, normally when you shrink stuff, then, then there's a squeeze, so I'm gonna create more commercial space and more office space. And I don't see that that's gonna harm anybody, and if I'm wrong, I'm the one that pays for it because it won't be economically viable. I don't think I'm wrong because Colliers each year has a survey they do with regards to the vacancy rate and they, last two years, they've listed downtown office space is in demand and they've, they've indicated that retail space is strong as well for this district. They've broke the city into five or six zones and they do it by district. So, for the past two years, they've had positive reinforcing remarks in their committee about needing more space. HOA, almost every condominium has an HOA, that's how your common areas get taken care of, snowplowed, trash removed, windows washed, that stuff. Modify the alley, you don't have to modify the alley for the parking elevator. The entrance is gonna be set back about three feet, five feet, so that it will take a 90-degree turn and make it into there, so there won't be any modification necessary on the alley as well. Short-term rentals, I don't know about that, that's up to you guys. I'm selling these units to different individuals. What they do with them after that is just like your own home, what you do. Now, in the condominium contract or the agreement, we may look at trying to outlaw that. I don't know what the legal parameters of that are, I mean, if, if I sell you my house, I can't then say, oh by the way, even after you own it, you're, you're not gonna do this and do that and the other things, so I'm not quite sure how that works, but I'm not gonna operate a rental operation out of 10 units there, I'm selling these things. The mural, the mural is not mine, it's on the wall, that wall is gonna be built up against, so the mural most likely will, will not be viewable, the building will be flush against that. Trying to review if there's anything else here that was, is there anything else you heard you wanted to ask me questions about?
Anything? Alright, I think that's it.
I think that's it.
Thank you Bob.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, so back to the commission.
I want to clear up one thing, the item that Commissioner Herbert brought up a minute ago and Commissioner Larson, I think is leading to. So, the estimate again on the NRA rebate is based on, on the Schums living at that location at the 1.02 million dollars, million nineteen thousand. So, if Bob and, you know, he and his family don't live there, then the rebate is actually gonna be 1.2 million, is that correct?
Yeah, it's like 1,130,000.
Okay.
Will you bring up that slide perhaps, just so everyone can see what we're looking at? Do you know the page number?
Are you talking about the incentive value, double package value?
Yeah. What, is that the one you're on now?
Yeah, it's on the assumptions.
Project assumptions in your presentation, that slide.
Is that, that one there?
No.
Yeah, it's the one that, project assumptions.
There you go, that's, that's the right one, right?
Right.
Yeah, thank you. You might blow it up a little bit, I can't read this, I'm curious myself. What page is that, I'll go to that. I have terrible vision.
Lisa, the, the concern you had about the top unit and the language that staff has brought up to take care of that problem, excuse me, the, our concern has always been, is there a benefit derived by, by Bob and his family living at that unit? And, and I suppose there would be because of the rebate received, but it seems to me that there's maybe a benefit here if he doesn't live there. A greater.
Yeah, if he doesn't live there, he gets the 110. He gets that benefit, yeah.
Okay, is that what you were trying to avoid also? That's why it was in or out?
If he's definitely gonna be there, if he's gonna be there, then he need, that, we just need to make sure that's, that he doesn't benefit from that.
Okay, well I just want to be clear also, so our concern only has to do, and this goes back to what Commissioner Herbert was talking about earlier, I don't think that we had talked about the benefit that could be received from having a commercial endeavor there. I don't think that we ever talked about that, or it was the intent of this commission to talk about the commercial part. It always had to do about he and his family having, having, dwelling at that unit. So, as long as we're talking, you know, to make sure that, our concern is there's no benefit derived if, if, if he and his family live, dwell at that location.
Correct.
That's it. And we believe that that language that staff has brought up takes care of it. Tom, you think that covers it all?
Correct.
And plus the safeguard of the, going to the county and, and, and having to fill out all of the things for the next 10 years or however, however long, okay.
Clear as mud.
Well, I just want to make sure that, that we're talking only about the living unit, not the commercial and, and, but we understand that, is there benefit derived past? Is there benefit derived if they even, if they don't live there? But that's, that's not for discussion, I guess.
That's not, that's not really topical to what we're talking about, but I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's probably frankly more beneficial to him if he doesn't live there because then he'd increase his incentive by 100 grand, which he could apply toward the purchase of a different house and that frees up more space for him to sell, it probably is a greater financial incentive for him not to live there.
That's over 10 years though.
Well, I just figured I would confuse it all.
Okay.
Any other Commissioner discussion?
Well, I, I guess here's, I was trying to make, you know, I was trying to kind of lay out some thoughts here on what exactly a yes vote means, like what are we saying with a yes vote? So, let me, let me throw out some things here, there's about seven of them, and if, if you disagree with them, I, I welcome that conversation, I'm not saying these are fact, this is just kind of my thoughts as we're going through it. What's it gonna mean with a yes vote? What a yes vote to me means, one, that you're comfortable taking our new economic development incentive policy that we came up with, and that calls for 10% of the units to be sold affordably, but on the first application of this, we're gonna lower that to 8%. So, the first time we have to use our new incentive policy, we're not gonna meet our new incentive policy. We've discussed it as a rounding error, one out of 12 is close enough to 10%, is how it's been discussed. But realize that, that what a yes vote means is that we've set this 10% as the minimum bar and at the first available opportunity, we'll go below that. Secondly, what does a yes vote mean? It means you're comfortable spending 1,198,888 if he resides in the structure, all the way up to 1.1 million in order to provide one single bedroom, not just one unit, but one single bedroom of affordable housing in Lawrence. Thirdly, a yes vote means you are comfortable believing that a $95,000 single-bedroom home, single bedroom, less than 600 square feet, can be reasonably purchased by an individual in need of affordable housing within our community. Fourth, you are comfortable incentivizing a project that Britt tells us in her assumptions creates zero full-time jobs. Understand the creation of jobs comes out of the commercial space and regardless of the existence of residential, standard grooming can open their spa in a commercial space. Our assumption we operate off of Britt's numbers assumes zero full-time jobs, you're comfortable giving a million-dollar incentive for zero full-time jobs. Fifth, what a yes vote means is that you are comfortable basing parking off of a parking elevator scheme, of which we are told 22 spaces cannot exist without. I'm not trying to tell you parking elevators can't exist, I just lived through the Here Apartment nightmare and, and I want that to be clear, that we have been told by the developer that if the parking elevator idea doesn't pan out, 22 spots don't exist, that, that's what he told us. Sixth, you are comfortable with the possibility that should Mr. Schum never live in this property, the item before us is financially and economically no different than the original rejected proposal. And seventh, and this is the one that I gotta be honest with you, all, all through this week I've had people talk to me about, they want to know, you know, are you taking into account who the applicant is? And in a perfectly unbiased world, we should not, right? We should look at all development equally, but the reality is, a yes vote means you are comfortable with the ethics behind a city commission providing a sizable, seven-digit economic incentive to a former city commissioner and mayor. In our roles as city commissioners, we are called public servants. In this capacity, we make some personal sacrifices, some familial sacrifices, some occupational sacrifices and obviously some financial sacrifices to be here. I may be in the minority of this viewpoint, but I would suggest that a former mayor making a financial incentives request of a commission is wholly inappropriate. These are the things that a yes vote says. If you are comfortable with those seven statements, I would encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you Matthew. Any, who's next? I guess that's what I'm saying.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, I'm gonna wait.
I guess you're up.
Okay. So, we've just heard what a yes vote means to Matthew and I don't plan to address each of his points in turn. I think I'm gonna come and say pretty much what I had in my mind, because we've, we're familiar with this presentation. There are three things, process, cost to the community and community benefit, that I think we should be looking at. I think the process has been exhaustive on this project. We've been through it, we considered it in December. It's been worked over more and more, so I think there's been transparency and good process around this application. Cost to the community is a rebate of some property taxes. Property taxes, at the current level, are very minimal. It's been vacant for a long time, that's what we've been getting. With the development, we'd receive property taxes and some of that would be rebated back to the developer to fill the gap that's been determined by NDC. We'd also forego some sales tax, and with the rate increase that the state's done, most of the sales tax is gonna be. most of the sales tax is going to be borne by the state. So if we look at the cost to our entity, the city, it's much less than what the total rebate is. There's been extensive comment on public benefit, I thought there was more agreement on what public benefit was. Frankly, I said in December that we need to have a bigger discussion about infill development, and I think we still need to have that discussion about infill development. We need infill development as a community. We need owner-occupied homes downtown. One of the comments tonight was, it's going to gentrify, I think we need owner-occupied condos for working people downtown. I think we need that. And, so, I'd like to see more owner-occupied downtown, and I'd like to have it in a, in a little bit different price range than, than what we've got here, but I applaud the definition of affordable housing and the inclusion of tenants to homeowners in this project. I think that addresses all questions about whether this is affordable housing or not. It doesn't provide any permanent jobs. Well, I've talked to some construction folks, and they've told me, you string together some construction jobs, you can make a career out of them. I mean, construction workers are important, construction work is important for our economy, and this would provide some jobs for construction. Downtown vitality and stability will be enhanced by owner-occupied property. I can't tell you how much I'd like to see owner-occupied opportunities, new owner-occupied opportunities downtown. Talk about affordable housing, it's dear to my heart. The goal that we have, as I understand it, is permanent dispersed affordable housing, which is what this project provides. I think we need to stress the dispersed part. On top of it all, what we're doing is we're investing in the future of our city and our community, because as we provide the rebate for the taxes in the first 10 years, what we're doing is we're investing in an enhanced revenue stream from this property over the next 50 years, which is, you know, maybe the life's, or this building, it may be longer. This is the, from what I've seen, the optimal development from a property tax viewpoint, you're maximizing the revenue, if you build a two-story project there, you, you would decrease the, the revenue, I guess by half over the, over the 50 years, so that's what a yes vote means to me, that's what I plan to do.
All good. Okay. You know, I, I appreciate the comments by both Commissioner Herbert, Vice Mayor Bowley. You know, the history of downtown, you know, during the times that I've been here, one of the things that we have looked at since 1983 is the opportunity to be able to add more to downtown, especially in the, in residential, and we've always known the one thing that we need to do was go up, and, and we have worked over the last 30-plus years as a commission and as a community to make sure that we're able to do that. And one of the things that we have here is we have that opportunity to be able to do that with this project. There are some costs, Matthew, I, I agree 100% with you, there are some costs to this, but we knew that there were going to be costs to it on any of the projects that we had in downtown. I think that, with the last, I don't know, two or three years, I've had the opportunity to help co-chair the Horizon 2020 plan, and one of the things that we're talking about there is infill. So Vice Mayor, I appreciate your comments about infill and, and the importance that is coming forward from, from the task force that I've really worked on, and being a part of that, and, and hearing the comments that we have there, this meets that plan and, and, you know, what's coming from there. You know, several, several months ago, in the last year, we sent Mr. Mr. Shum away with, on a vote that declined the application, and there were comments made, and I think one of the things that they've done is they've come back and they have met, you know, the things that we brought up or the reasons that we were against this project. I think that, again, I think it meets all the guidelines that we've had, you know, every, every change that we've made, and, and they have made the changes to meet that. Again, there is a cost, but there is a cost in, in downtown development and how important that downtown is, and I think it's extremely important to this community. I applaud the effort, and I will vote yes.
Thanks. Let me start out with, the tech, the current taxes on this property is $7,200 a year, is that, that's my understanding. So I looked at this, and considering it's been vacant for 27 years, if they would have paid the same amount of taxes that entire time, the taxes we generated was only $194,000. The first 10 years, if this property is built, will generate $538,000 additional taxes. So right there, just, just having some sort of development is extremely important, obviously. And then we look at the, what was spoken to earlier about if he just built a two-story building, we're looking at 6.2 million dollars over the life of the building versus 13, 13.2 million dollars over the life of the design that he's proposed, which I think is important, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of difference. Then I went back and, you know, I've been looking at our new policy, which we've put in place, and I would agree with Commissioner Amick's that, that Mr. Shum has gone back and continued to look at different options and continue to try to, try to address all the issues that we brought before him, and I think he has. Yes, I was very, I am very concerned about the, what he would potentially get if he lives there, and so I'm really glad that that's out of the picture and that we've got some language that's going to protect that, that's important. But if you look at our economic policy, it says there's five driving objectives, and one is to encourage existing businesses to grow, we've got that on this project, is to assist new business startups, we've got 30 offices that he's going to put in there, that's going to encourage the entrepreneurial spirit, so to speak, recruit new businesses from outside Lawrence, Kansas, whether this will do that, I don't know, encourage high-tech and research. Now, again, that's another one that, that this may or may not do that, but also to reach, retain and attract businesses that are good corporate citizens and that support local and philanthropic organizations, and I know that Mr., the Shum family has been a strong supporter of Lawrence and their organizations, and so I appreciate that very much. And then you, you go further into our policy, and we talk about, there's a very specific part that says what a city NRA criteria is. In order to get NRA, there's some city criteria, and it's, and there, again, there's five items there, and it says, we'll, we'll promote redevelopment that will enhance the downtown, that's a real key one in that, in that process, this obviously does that. It promotes redevelopment of properties that are vacant or underutilized, this property does that. We promote mixed use that diversifies the economic base, the idea of you've got 30 offices in there, that's going to create, I believe, quite a bit of diversity. And it enhances the vitality of the neighborhood, I think it will, some people may not, but I think it will. And will enhance the community's sustainability, energy efficiency, and the multimodal transportation, this is something that's very important to me, I know you didn't discuss it, but the project is going to be built to lead standards, which is extremely important. And if, with, in that, in that same breath, with the infill and density, the sustainable features are the infill and density that it's going to provide, using of the, of this existing city infrastructure, that's very important, that's, you know, provides a really good sustainable process, building to lead standards, and then, and a key one here is enhancing the multimodal transportation process. Having the density at that location as we spread it across the downtown area, it's going to allow our bus transportation systems, our biking, our walking systems just expand that much more, that is a key, key factor, I think, as we build our city. It broadens our tax base, as I said, for the numbers just don't lie, it's going to broaden our tax base, we're going to be able to get tax base from, instead of 194,000 over 27 years, we're going to be getting that in the first 10 years, almost three times that much. And it also provides off-street parking, that is part of the public good. The affordable housing component of it, the idea that we now have the possibility of having an owner-occupied unit within the building, I think that that's key, I know there's debate as to what's affordable, but, but we have got to, we have a definition, and that's the definition we have to stick by, if we, if we try to apply a different definition across all these projects, that's, that is not doing a service to anybody. We have a definition, it's within our policies, and we need to continue to stick to that. And Rebecca, I really appreciate your bringing up the point that it also brings in a mixed income into the building, that is extremely important, we've seen studies that show that that makes a difference on the ability for, for individuals to, to rise up or to, to, you know, get better jobs and to, to live, you know, with others that, so they can see other people's point of view, and I think that's really important. So with that in mind, yeah, it's going to cost us, but it's going to cost us a lot more, I think, if we don't do this, and so for that reason, I'm going to vote for this.
All right. Well, I'm voting no. You guys have done a great job of displaying all of the reasons for and against, I'm not going to rehash them at all. I looked at my door knock, door knocker card, I'm not sure what you call that, but when you're campaigning, you know, you have a card that you leave at doors, and one of my little lines said, stop raising taxes on people and then giving incentives to other people, that's just, we've just got to stop doing that, so that's why I voted against raising taxes for property taxes, and I'm going to do the other part of that door knocker card and not say we're going to approve a cent, but it doesn't matter, because I'm, looks like a two vote, I can, three, two vote, I can count. So, does someone of these three people, I assume, want to make the motion?
I do want to make a quick clarification to Stuart's comments, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to change your vote, obviously, but when we talk about scatter plotting and the importance of moving affordable housing throughout the community, I'm as big an advocate of that as anybody here, and the, the reason you do that, the fundamental reason, is because it avoids haves and have-nots situations within a school district. I will support 100% a, a project that scatter plots affordable housing. The affordable housing that is addressed in this project is a single-bedroom unit, whose kids are going to live here? This, this doesn't afford us a school district benefit to scatter plotting affordable housing when there aren't going to be children living in that unit.
So all units should have children in it?
No, but the benefit to scatter plotting is because it enables your school district to avoid the haves and have-nots, it's the same reason that when Lawrence built the second high school, they divided the town on 15th Street, which geographically makes no actual sense towards proximity of where people lived at the school, but it avoids the haves and have-nots situation. And so, well, all I'm saying is, scatter plotting is great, and I will support it fully, when it actually reaps the benefits that, that it can.
Well, my response to that, Matthew, is that that's one reason, that may not be all of the reasons. So, you know, I think it's important to go ahead and do it when we have the opportunity.
I guess I'll put a plug in there that sales tax goes to the schools at some point, so the fact that we don't necessarily have a cost to us because there's no sales tax paid on IRBs, that's, I don't agree with that point, so I'll just put it out there. I think everyone else had five points, but that is one that I deeply disagree with.
I just, one more thing on, on the affordable housing component of it, as Rebecca said, this does not solve affordable housing. If we don't do, if we don't do it piece by piece by piece and continue to move forward with it, then we'll never get to, get to that point, and I don't even know if it can be solved, but we sure can make headway on it.
I appreciate Travis's comments that not only are we not solving it, but we realistically may have taken a step backwards.
I disagree with that.
Well, I said sales tax, I meant property tax, sorry about that. Hopefully people corrected that in their head when I said that. This has been a very long conversation, I hope we're, we're done with this, does one of these three people want to make a motion?
I would make a, a motion that we adopt on First Reading Order Number 9303, establishing the neighborhood revitalization area and approving the neighborhood revitalization area plan and adopt Resolution Number 7173, authorizing industrial revenue bond financing to assess a sales tax exemption on the project construction materials.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowley, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. So the, those three, two, I assume, I didn't hear. All right, so, I think we're done here.
Thank you very much for giving the opportunity.
All right, you're very welcome, let's move it on out. All right, number two. So we're going to consider authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with Riverfront LLC related to rent and parking maintenance payments under the amended and restated ground lease as amended for real property commonly known as One Riverfront Plaza.
Good evening, Mayor Fiskers, I'm Charlie Beal, Assistant Attorney, and I'll introduce this item. As you may know, the City and Riverfront LLC are parties to a ground lease whereby Riverfront leases from the City land on which a portion of the building they own sits. Under various agreements, Riverfront is obligated to make a land lease payment to the City as well as an annual maintenance payment for maintenance of the adjacent garage. In April of this year, after receiving some inquiries from the Riverfront LLC, the Finance Department discovered that it had not billed Riverfront for its annual rent and garage maintenance payments, maintenance payments for quite some time. Since that time, staff and Riverfront representatives have been working to resolve the matter. Before you tonight is a settlement agreement whereby Riverfront agrees to pay the full amount due the City, which is $256,096. That payment will be made as following. The City will immediately credit a $20,000 payment that Riverfront made to the City in June. Riverfront will deliver $180,000 to the City within seven days of the full execution of the settlement agreement. The remaining balance of $56,096, which I point out is outside of the statute of limitations, will be paid in equal installments of $2,337.33 per month, commencing in January of 2018, with the final installment due in December of 2019. Staff believes that this resolution is fair and appropriate, and we, we would recommend that the commission authorize execution of this agreement. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? All right, let's go to public comment. It looks like we have two new members in our audience, though, is there something that, that you all wanted to say? Thank you for waiting through the two and a half hour previous conversation. All right, is there any public comment on this item?
Dan, Danenburg, 27002, University Drive. Why not interest? It seems to me if the City's been deprived of a certain amount of money, there should be interest on it in addition to the, the base payment. I, I know maybe we're into the usual local cronyism or whatnot, but I think there should be interest payments on this.
Thank you, Dan. Is there any interest on this?
No, there is not any interest on this. I said at the table in this negotiation, and at the very beginning, we made it clear that a significant portion of these funds were not eligible to be collected due to the statute of limitations. I can tell you, interest was discussed, as was the statute of limitations portion, and this was a negotiation. The Simon family that is represented by this receivable, you know, they, you know, maybe they should have pursued it further with us, but let's make no mistake about this, the City had culpability in this as well, probably more so, and it wasn't until Mr. Kidney and his staff uncovered this issue and we studied it even further, that we determined the extent of this problem. Actually, I think the Simon family were honorable in reaching this agreement with us, and so, while I would have loved to have established interest and damage penalties and all sorts of other things, the reality is, that would have led to litigation, and the litigation would have likely outstripped any gain from interest and, and probably put the portion that was subject to capital, or to, beyond the statute of limitations in jeopardy. This, you know, there's always, I guess, some buyer-seller remorse from parties that enter into these negotiations. that enter into these negotiations, but I think that there's some practical realities that people that ends up, end up actually doing the negotiations have to face. I think we face those. I think this is a fair and equitable settlement for this city, and I support it despite Mr. Danenberg's comments about interest earnings.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, this is very fair settlement. We need to do this. Dan, thank you very much. Tom, thank you.
I agree. I think that, and staff's done a really good job of getting this settled very quickly without a lot of cost. So I appreciate it very much.
Part of this that I think's worthy of highlighting is the way in which it was handled by city staff. There's, when you uncover a mistake like this that frankly leaves some egg on your face, I would think there would be a tendency to be hush about it and say, you know, if no one ever finds out, we look better. I appreciate the fact that, that you were open and willing to come forth and say, hey, we made a huge mistake. This wasn't billed for a number of years. And it does, it leaves some egg on our face, but it was the right thing to do. It's the right process to follow, and I appreciate the way that it was handled by staff.
I'd echo all that and also express my appreciation, appreciation to the Simons family for their responsiveness in the negotiations. Thank you.
All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with Riverfront LLC related to the rent and parking maintenance payments under the amended and restated ground lease as amended.
For maybe the-
For the real property commonly known as One Riverfront Plaza.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Larson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience again. All right. So now we're going to go into commission items. I had a couple things that I wanted to bring up. Yeah, as the mayor, a lot of times I receive requests for support on things, and so I just wanted to pass these along to you all to consider if it's something that you want to do or not. Now that I think about it, I got a third request for something having to do with aviation, but I already forwarded that on to the Aviation Advisory Board for them to review to see if they wish. So one of these, let me know if you've already gotten this email. I'm not sure if you've received this, is for a federal, someone looking for support for the American Anti-Corporation Act at the federal level.
I think it's corruption.
What, did I not say that?
We're not anti-corporations, we're anti-the corruption. I want to be specifically pro-
We are anti-corruption.
Anti-corruption. Thank you. I didn't even catch that when I said that. Thank you for catching that. If, what I'm going to do is if you guys are all interested in this, I'm going to pass this along to the city manager. I'm going to send this email to him so you can talk to him about it as a group, but I just wanted you all to be aware of it. And so the other one has to do with the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival Program, which of course is in the news quite a bit recently as President Trump looking to rescind that in the next year or two. I don't remember what the timeline was. Does the commission have an interest in expressing support to continue the program?
Could we see the information before we're asked to take a stand on it?
Absolutely. That's what we are being asked to do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to weigh in on it if I haven't seen any information on it.
Okay. Yeah, this, I'm bringing these up, not so we decide them now, but just so we can have future conversation. It sounds like maybe people might be interested in that one. I guess I'm gauging interest from y'all.
Just send it to us.
Can we just have the city manager send it so it's not a coma violation?
Yeah, I can't send it because that's why I'm bringing it up now. Okay. Any other commission items? Those were my two things. Please?
I have some questions for staff on the sales tax vote. People have been reaching out with questions, and I'm, you know, interested in getting answers that comply with the legal constraints that we have and also accurate answers. Two of the questions that I've been, that have been sent to me are, why don't you have a permanent plan for spending for the entire period of time? And there's also the idea that if this doesn't pass this time, we can do it in the following year with no impact, but how would we budget with a failure of the sales tax increment? So I'd like to be able to respond to that. Maybe you can help me now, or you can-
The first question was, why don't we have a spending plan? You know, I think it goes to the degree of specificity that someone may want as to how we would spend. My history in dealing with bond-type issues and these types of referendum issues, first off, it's designated for specific purposes. It's transit, infrastructure, affordable housing. So there's an old standby rule that many of you recall every so often, and that is you can't bind future commissions. Well, you can bind future commissions to some degree by passing a bond issue, for example, as a result of sales tax revenue or however you would do that. But with those revenue streams coming in, each individual commission going forward for the length of that sales tax addition is really free to decide many of those things. Now, you can bind certain major projects, but to think that you're going to go out a decade and, and be so specific about everything you're going to spend the money on is, is kind of, I think it's, it, it, it ends up, you do not have the flexibility to adjust to changing circumstances environmental. One of the things we talk about in these things, in these bond, or the sales tax issues, is we intend to use this money for leverage to achieve, you know, federal grants, state grants, maybe private partnerships to get some things done. And so those opportunities are going to present themselves. So if you're so specific by year, that's a complication. And again, it's difficult to bind future commissions, besides the fact that you need to be nimble in terms of how you spend it. So you have a designation to begin with, with the sales tax that says what the category is that you can spend the money on. We've also, with our CIP, which we've matched up with these, laid out a fairly long-term proposal as to how we would spend those monies. But even your CIP has flexibility built into it. So I would say that's an inaccurate statement on the individuals, and I would say, quite frankly, that they need to have a better understanding of that. To the extent that we can write an answer and not violate, you know, bridging a, taking a position as to the actual vote on the referendum, we'll look at that. So we'll take those questions. We're getting a lot of those questions, and the reality is you end up in a situation, you have to be very careful about the responses as city officials, as elected officials in terms of advocacy. In fact, I'm hearing from candidates that are incumbents that are really challenged with that issue.
Yes.
Because they're, they're limited on their responses, whereas candidates that are not incumbents are pretty much free to say how they would go one way or the other. So it's, it's, it's not the same question based on your incumbency. The other issue?
The idea that we could vote this down and do it again next year and not have an impact on the budget process.
Well, I think it defies the whole budget process to begin with. We have to have, let's see, so it would be, what, November of 2018? Well, you know full well that you have to have your budget for that following year, established in August, right? So we have to have it approved. So you'd have, you'd have an alternative plan, but you would have to have, well, what's your alternative source if that next referendum fails? Now, that's something like transit or the infrastructure and how you deal with those things, you know, adding, adding that burden because you can't risk it. And so then you're shifting the burden to some maybe alternative kind of form of revenue taxation that you would use to achieve that. Again, we'll take those questions and see if we can't refine the answers beyond my babbling at this point, but-
Actually, I kind of want you to babble a little more. This has opened up a conversation that I wanted to have in commission items anyway. Lisa and I are both in a kind of a peculiar situation, as you pointed out, and it's become very apparent with these forums that the sales tax issue is perhaps the premier issue come November. So it's very difficult as a candidate to not be able to talk about the only issue anyone wants to talk about. So my question might be more for Randy and Tony, and just in terms of, to what degree as an individual am I allowed to speak on the sales tax? If I'm, you know, because 24 hours from now, Rochelle's going to call me. I want to know my thoughts on sales tax, where I stand. Do I, do I need to tell her? I, you know, I, I have nothing to say to you. I mean, like, what do I, how do I address this without getting in trouble?
Okay, I'll do my best to respond to those questions. The Kansas Attorney General has issued an opinion that states that public officials should refrain from using public funds to advocate for an outcome on a ballot measure. So it's the use of public funds and, and the use of your title, your commissioner title, to advocate. The Attorney General has stated that it is fine to give information, educational information, but the concept or the, the theory behind it is that as elected officials, you represent the entire public, those who may be in favor and those who may not be in favor. So in your role as commissioners, you should remember that you represent all points of view. As a private citizen, you have the right to participate in any, to have opinions on, on matters that are being voted upon. And in your private capacity, you can state your opinion as an individual. But in the use of public funds and in the use of your title, you should refrain from advocating a position on a ballot measure.
So if her article references me as current sitting city commissioner, Matthew Herbert, since my title is involved, that, I, I should have no opinion?
Well, I think that the journal, I mean, I'm hoping that the news media understands the position that you're in, and-
They're doing a three-part series, and part one is sales tax.
Well, I'm giving my, the best advice that I can give you. And it, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenging position, but I'm trying to follow what the Attorney General has recommended.
Okay. Thank you.
Tony, because we are commissioners 24/7, is it, how do we get around that part if we are, like I say, if I'm commissioner 24 hours a day, how am I not, how am I, when am I, when am I a private citizen? I'm not. So I think I need to be pretty careful. And I'm not informed, so.
Yeah. Well, I, I think there's also been opinions where the, the law recognizes that you are elected officials and that people will share with you their opinions, and they will ask for your opinions as well. And that's part of the electoral process and the exchange. But again, in your use of public funds to advocate, you should avoid that. You should avoid from using your title to further a ballot measure. If you want to say, hey, as Mike Amick's, I believe X, Y, and Z, if you make that qualifier, qualifier, I think that would be helpful, and I think that would be recognized by someone that was trying to challenge whether you were trying to use your title. If you preface it with, Mike Amick's citizen, this is my opinion, I think that would be acceptable.
Okay.
Oftentimes, city employees are in the very same boat. And we, people in certain positions have to be very careful about expressing opinions that might be perceived as an opinion of the city. And it's just a very delicate balance that public officials and public employees have to dance.
Well, you and I have had that discussion in this very room about, you know, when, when am I not a commissioner? You know, what part of the day am I not? If it's standing behind my chair where I work, am I still a commissioner? And, and I think you've told me in the past, yeah, I'm still elected no matter where I'm at. So there is that fine line.
That's why you get to charge a premium for the-
Yeah, you bet.
You know, there's a hard law interpretation of it, and then there's the impression of it. And conflict of interest isn't always about an actual violation of the law. At times, it's the appearance. And when you become elected officials or a city manager or a city official, there is the obligation that, that you have to present that nonpartisan kind of view, and that extends to referenda-type issues beyond who you support as a candidate or don't support as a candidate. And we kind of accept that. So it's so contextual when you have those conversations about what you think about things. And that's why even in the staff discussions we're having about the educational information that we prepare, we're being so cautious about, you know, really choosing our words, to the point where we don't want multiple people, you know, even delivering that information so that there's no variance in the, you know, in the, in the information that's transferred or the inflection even of how it's transferred.
Don't show a favored side, right?
Yeah. And it's, you know, people interpret a lot of how you react to things.
Yeah.
Any other commission items?
No, one more. I think that we should mark the passing of Dr. Helen Gillis. Helen was a pediatrician in Lawrence for many years. She touched many lives. I don't know if she was your pediatrician, Mike, but there were a lot of people who, who trusted her with their children. And I think she graduated from medical school in 1945 and served our community. And after she retired, she served the Haskell community at their health center. She served on the school board. She was a Girl Scout leader, and she was a key supporter and leader at the Lawrence Community Nursery School. Those are a few of the things that she did. She was a true leader for our community, and we're a better place because of what she did for us. So I just want to express my condolences to the family and, and just express for me personally that I have the highest regard for what Helen brought to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and mayor. Any other commission items? Okay. So we're on to the city manager's report.
There's a lot in this report this week, and I'll try and be concise as to the points I address. First thing I do want to mention, we, most of you attended the swearing-in of our new police chief, Gregory Burns, yesterday, and we had a chance to meet his wife, who's moved out to Lawrence with him, Amanda Burns. And I want to note, in addition to welcoming Gregory Burns to our community, to understand that, and he hasn't been through this in his career quite as much as I have in terms of moving. So between Deb and I, we've got it figured out who's responsible for what. So I think you're going to have to give him a little time because I think this is maybe the first physical move he's made in his career change from Louisville, outside of Louisville, because he's spent his whole career in Louisville. So it's a little different when you haven't gone through that experience before, especially when you have somebody that is, is supportive, quite frankly, as my wife is in terms of putting up with me and on, on moves, in terms of career moves. And not that Amanda isn't, but she hasn't been through it. So we need to give him a little breathing room as they, they adjust. He was here earlier this evening. I kind of released him because I saw how this agenda was going to go, and, but he'll be back, and he'll be out in the community.
Nine o'clock, are you kidding me?
Yeah. Well, he has, trust me, has a lot of boxes to unpack, trying to figure out where he's going to live. I want to talk about a couple things tonight. There's two issues on regarding farmland. And the first one- And the first one is on the investments. So there's two issues in investments that I would point out to you this evening. And one was the projections of the rate of return. And there were some in the community that were really pressing to get to the bottom of, well, who made these projections and so forth. As near we could determine, we went back and previous city manager Corliss's report dated in 2010, embedded in that was the analysis estimating the interest earnings on the, of 4.4 million on the initial eight and a half million that we took over in the trust fund for the remediation of the farmland property. And so we suspect that that was not done by a consultant, that that was done internally. Obviously, it would have come out of the finance department. And obviously, the previous finance director, Ed Mullins, it came from out of that operation. So to the extent of actually who put pen to paper created that, you know, I'm not going to go into details on employees in the operation beyond naming the management people who ultimately, and I think Dave Corliss would agree with me, that ultimately, if it's on my watch, it's my responsibility ultimately. And I do think that Dave would feel the same way. That isn't to point blame, but it's to point that that's where the analysis shows up in terms of that report. But that's not the only failing. The other part of it, in fact, I would say that there's other things in terms of projecting what the costs were and the scope of this and determining what cash flows were needed, you know, in terms of how you would determine how much you could earn on that trust fund. The other thing I would say that was a problem was, at one point, the money went uninvested. And that occurred during an interim period of time between finance directors. Ultimately, Brian Kidney recognized that it had not been invested. He had assigned that to somebody. That person failed to complete that assignment. It may have actually been two people that failed to complete that assignment. And I suspect that based on our estimates, the loss was in the area of close to $19,000 to $20,000 for the failure to make that investment. So there's two parts to the whole interest earnings on that. The other issue I want to bring up in terms of farmland is our work on finding alternative strategies to deal with the operational issues that we have. And our storage facilities are pretty much maxed out, Brandon, is that the case? And so what we're trying to do is figure out alternative locations to apply that nitrogenated water in places beyond our current areas. So we're examining end-of-pipe solutions. We pipe some of it to the north side of the river and we're looking hard at other farm applications in those areas, even if we had to extend the pipe. By way of example, approximately 148 truckloads would be the equivalent of hauling a million gallons of water. And we have significantly more than a million gallons of water that would have to be dealt with on a regular basis. A million gallons of water with 148 truckloads, just to give you a dollar amount, would cost us about $40,000 for trucking purposes. So you potentially, if you could extend the pipe off the existing system to serve other areas, you would have a much better, you know, return on investment doing that than you would just investing. We've looked at applications on our own public grounds and things of that sort. That's a fraction of what we need to get rid of, but we're looking at all those alternatives. Again, I want to say, and I said this earlier, the state has been very cooperative, very supportive. They have made good suggestions. They're willing to work with us, both on a short-term basis and a long-term basis in determining strategies. And again, I want to say that that has been refreshing in terms of working with a state agency that, you know, could just exert pure authority and they have not chosen to be like that. So hopefully, that relationship, and I'm confident it will continue, but that will make life a lot easier and a lot less expensive going forward. The other thing I wanted to report out on was the Airbnb issue. On August 15th, the commission directed staff to pursue a framework to regulate short-term rentals. We're working on that. One of the public speakers referenced that as well this evening. So I think we're scheduled to, well, what we're doing at this point is we're trying to get some public involvement and commentary on this. And so we developed a frequently asked question sheet on this and we're offering the public the opportunity to take a survey online. That's available through October 13th. If you drill down into the manager's report on this agenda, you'll find the email or the web address to get yourself into that. You can also submit written testimony to our own Danielle Bushcutter. And her address is located there. And you can do that through October 13th. And then we're going to have a work session on November 14th when a draft ordinance will be presented based on some of this public input that we receive in terms of ideas and how to manage and oversee short-term rentals. So that's kind of where we're at with that particular issue.
Tom?
Yes?
Do we have information on other commercial activities that we're regulating in residential areas?
Yeah, we have, we have knowledge of that, but I-
Do we have like some, I realize that there are commercial activities that are allowed-
You mean like home occupation?
Exactly, I mean, there are commercial, and I'd like to see information about that as well so we have the context for what we're already doing in commercial activities in residential areas.
All right.
Thank you.
Recordings of historic resource commission meetings. We had a member of the public suggest that our own historic resource commission had banned the taping of meetings during the meetings. I think this was just a, you know, a miscommunication between members of the public. And so it created a perception that was not accurate. We've since gone back and talked to the HRC. We think we know what kind of, it was an extrapolation probably of a conversation that occurred that took it to a point that was not ever intended and nor anybody even thought was being discussed. So I think that kind of resolves that issue, but we wanted to report back to you on that. Municipal court update. Again, we're working with the University of Kansas School of Social Welfare, the Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center, DECA, and the Lawrence Municipal Court have partnered to place social work interns from KU's social work program, degree program at court for their clinical education. And our own Judge Scott Miller has been appointed to serve in the Kansas Supreme Court's ad hoc committee on bonding practices, fines, and fees in municipal courts. This obviously is also a tie-in with the efforts we're making on diversion and more appropriate ways to adjudicate incidents that occur in our community. I responded to a request from the school district, required request regarding the waiving of permit fees. And I know at times it's a bit, when we say that there is a tax burden shift and that was embedded in the report, it's sometimes hard to follow. So what we've done is we've put a PowerPoint up for you to look at. And I think he just expanded it. And the point I would make is how this works. So when you look at the school district, the school district's boundaries, which incorporate the city's boundaries, but the school district's boundaries are larger than the cities. And therefore, they have more valuation within those boundaries. So if you were to take and pursuant to their request and split the fee for the building permit fees that would normally be charged for a project like this, then what you would be doing is saying, well, the whole of the school district's boundaries would be paying that half. And the city residents, or the city taxpayers rather, would be paying the other 50%. So what then do I mean by a tax burden shift? So if I could get you to focus your attention on the two PowerPoint, or three PowerPoint screens one at a time, you'll note that the total value is 985 million for the school. No, no, the total is 1,248, 1 billion 248 million for the total school district. That's split out, 985 million of that is in the city. And then the outside area, you know, outside the city limits but still in the school district would approach 263 million dollars. So if you decided to divide the cost on a 50-50 basis, what that would do is the total cost is 180,000, $180,000 for the permit fees. That's the estimate for the permit fees. So a 50-50 split would have 90 being charged to the whole of the school district. And we would retain responsibility for the remaining, remainder 90,000. So what that tax burden shift looks like is that if in fact you did a 50-50 split, the city share by paying into the school district or having, you know, paying, our taxpayers, city taxpayers paying into the school district and then paying 50% would look like 161,000 out of the 180 would be paid by the city. The area outside the city limits but in the school district would pick up the remainder, which would be 18,981 dollars. So if you go down to the next horizontal line, it reads division of costs without the split. What that means is that the school district would pay everything. And because we represent almost 79% of the total value, we would still be picking up a sizable portion of that fee, our taxpayers would, which would equate to 142,000 out of the 180. And then the area outside the city limits but still in the school district would pay 37,961 dollars. So if you compare the 50-50 split against the school district paying the fee that would normally be charged, that means that we would be paying 18,981 dollars more. Thus, the area outside the city limits would be paying 18,981 dollars less. That's the tax burden shift that we're referring to when we talk about these things. There were a number of other questions embedded in my letter back to the school district. I'm not going to go into that kind of detail with the rest of them, but be glad to answer any questions that you might have about that. The one point I would make is typically, when another jurisdiction issues bonds for an improvement like this, they incorporate these types of fees into the cost. It's my belief that these costs are clearly eligible to be paid for out of bond proceeds. And so I've asked the question, did you contemplate these fees as a part of, you know, the total budget that you had raised to begin with? And I'd have not, I don't have the answer, but I would, either way, I would wonder why they didn't if they did not, because those are stated fees that they would typically pay. Any questions? We'll wait for the answers and we'll get those back to you. Update on fire station number one. Two most important dates are, the construction date is now scheduled to start around December 1st. Construction completion is to be determined by bidding, but suspected to be mid-year of '18. There's been a lot of things that happened. The chief would tell you that part of the complexity is when we decided to not just improve a portion of the building, but take the whole building a little more holistically, like it shares a roof and it has common plumbing and common HVAC. And it made little sense to me to separate those things and not do the whole building at the same time. And the net beneficiaries of all of this will be both the fire service and our senior resource center when it's all done. So I still believe that that was the right deal, right approach to it, even if it takes a little longer to get it done. In terms of future agendas, a public hearing for sidewalk dining renewals, if needed, is scheduled for the next meeting agenda on the 17th. And then on work sessions, the 17th, we've got commercial recycling. Diane has also reached out to the CJCC and asked Robert if he would come over and kind of just update the city commission on what's going on with the CJCC in terms of the projects and schedules and timing. And hopefully, he'll be able to come over and give us a brief review of the work of the CJCC. On the 14th, we have a strategic plan update and a short-term rental ordinance discussion. And on the 12th of December, we're planning a downtown conference center proposal discussion as well. And I, the last thing I'll tell you, I had a very nice meeting with our university, our new university chancellor. I think what I'm trying to do is develop a relationship with the new chancellor and hopefully, we can do some projects together going forward and develop a higher level of communication that results in better understanding of our roles and the projects that we work on and the relationships between neighborhoods and maybe doing some projects together going forward. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Tom. So now we're on to the calendar. Are there any items to add? Didn't you already publish the 2018 meeting schedule? I thought I saw that somewhere.
It was on this evening's consent agenda, Mayor.
Okay, that's where I saw it. Forgot to ask about January 1st, or was it the 2nd?
There, that's the meeting that was, that would regularly be on January 2nd is not, is canceled according to the calendar.
So it's just canceled outright?
Yes.
I remember in the past that meetings that were around that kind of holiday period that perhaps sometimes you scheduled like just an earlier meeting and we would pretty much just do consent agenda type of items. Are we going to do anything like that?
A lot of times that's done at the end of the year if we need to.
Okay.
Kind of, but with your new meeting schedule, you know, we will just be meeting the 5th, the 12th, and the 19th of December. We don't have that last meeting of the year that we used to kind of make that adjustment.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that.
Well, you can always call a special if you have a critical item that needs to be dealt with.
Sure. But I thought there was something to do with bill pain, that you needed something like that.
We used to do that, I think, when we had the four meetings. But, you know, as we get closer, if there's some reason for you all to change the meeting time, you know, to a different time because of schedules or whatnot, you can do that just like you have changed the meeting for November 7th.
I just wanted to make sure, start getting it on the calendar. Any other calendar items? All right, so I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Sodin, second by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Hey, Dustin, will you come up here a second?
Huh?
Will you come up here a second?